So, welcome everybody. Good evening. I'd like to thank you all for coming to the March 2nd rendition of a Fairfax Town Council meeting. And we will begin the evening with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can we please have a roll call?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Weinshof?
Here.
Councilmember Kohler?
Here.
Councilmember Lacks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed?
Hi. Here.
Hi. Mayor Goddard?
Here.
Thank you. And tonight, as often we either dedicate a meeting or we close a meeting to someone, I would like to dedicate this meeting to someone who's very much alive, who happens to have been born on a day of, one of the days that I get to be the mayor of this fine town. And so I would like to dedicate this meeting to her, and she is my mother. So I'd like to say happy birthday to my mother. And with that, I'm hoping we'll have a very nurturing meeting. And the meeting protocol will be as follows. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or the motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. So please, go ahead and turn off all your cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. Town council will review the agenda at 10:00 and ascertain if any items will be continued to another meeting. And anything that's not begun by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless we vote to suspend the rule. Announcements. The Fairfax Food Pantry, Saturday mornings, every Saturday morning, 9:00 to 11:00 at the Fairfax Community Church. That's at 2398 Sir Francis Drake. They always need volunteers between 8:00 and 12:00 o'clock. It's a wonderful, wonderful resource. Please don't hesitate to go to the food pantry should you have need, and they're always there for you. Vacancies on boards and commissions for Fairfax residents. There are two vacancies on the Open Space Committee. One on the G-PIC, which is the General Plan Implementation Committee. Two on the volunteer board. One on the Tree Committee. And you can pick up an application at Town Hall or on the Town website, and you can contact the Town Clerk, Michelle, for more information. The Fairfax Deep Green Incentive Program has begun. The first 100 Fairfax residents to sign up for Marin Clean Energy Fairfax Deep Green Incentive Program, in their 100% renewable energy service, they will receive $5 monthly credit for 12 months. And for details, you can contact Marin Clean Energy. The Brew Fest, which is cosponsored by Park, is on Saturday, March 19th, from 1:00 to 5:00 in the Pavilion. There is a CERT training in Kentfield, March 19th and 20th. You can sign up at readymarin.org or call the phone number that's here, which you probably won't remember. Annual Spring Egg Hunt, followed by music, face painting, and entertainment for children ages eight and below. It's on Saturday, March 26th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Bellinas Park. It's sponsored by Park and Rec and the Recreation Department. And there will be a community forum. Visit www.townoffairfax.org to participate in the survey. It's an online survey. It's not a public, in-person forum. It's about short-term and vacation rentals in Fairfax. And the survey ends on March 18th. And with that, we're going to move straight into... Oh, sorry. Barbara?
Just a quickie. I wanted to announce that our pedestrian flags pilot program launched on Saturday, February 27. And this is brought to us by Emma Lauder of Fairfax, sponsored by the Fairfax Town Council. I've asked Emma to give an update tonight during open time. And there was an article in the Marin IJ on Sunday. It was a little inaccurate, but it presented the program. And I want to thank Emma, both her parents, I think her sister, and some of the other volunteers, and also Michelle Gardner, who worked very hard getting the signs together, and our Public Works guys who got things put out there. So with that, we'll hear more from Emma soon. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes?
Just wanted to announce to the fundraiser for Sustainable Fairfax, a month from tonight, March 2nd, Saturday, March 2nd, April 2nd, at the Bicycle Museum. Be featuring some great local music, including three of our council members tonight. John, Renee, and myself will be among the performers. So it's a great night, a great cause, some great music, and a great community event. So mark your calendars. And also, I just wanted to remind folks, one of the things that we're going to be discussing later on is our recycling program and garbage contract with Marin Sanitary Service. One of the most important things that we can do, just to remind people, that's not necessarily being done by a lot of folks, is we can use our green cans for kitchen waste and compost. So encourage people to just remember that. You can take all your kitchen waste, if you don't compost it, throw it in the green can. Reduces the volume of your regular garbage, keeps your garbage bill down. That can doesn't get all funky either. And one of the most interesting things that you can do that they've surveyed is if you have a little pail in your kitchen next to your sink to catch all those food scraps, that was one of the things that people can do that most increases your ability to do that. So just reminder, if you can get a kitchen pail, and use the green can for your kitchen scraps.
Okay. Thanks, Peter. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to open time. So this is a open time for public expression. Before I explain it all, is there anyone here for open time? Okay. Excellent. So you get three minutes. You can approach the podium and state your name and your address if you feel comfortable doing so. Just for general information, individuals have three minutes to speak and five minutes if you're a group. Are you a group, Emma? Okay. And this is an opportunity for people to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. So welcome. Push the button.
Oh. Hello. My name is Emma. I am the creator of the Fairfax Pedestrian Flag Program. The flags were put out last Saturday, the 27th. Some volunteers from Sustainable Fairfax, my friend and I, monitored their use over a two-hour period from 11:00 to 1:00. We noticed that about 63 people used the flags on Elsie and Broadway crosswalk while 38 did not. We also monitored the crosswalk by the theater and parcade and saw that 46 people used the flags while 48 did not. Many people cut over the crosswalk and did not notice the flags. We did get lots of positive comments from people, such as "What a great idea. We have needed this for such a long time." And "What took so long?" Many people seemed to like the idea. A friend and I also monitored the Elsie and Broadway crosswalk yesterday and found that 26 people used the flags and 3 did not. We will be monitoring the flags this Saturday, weather permitting. The project will take time for people to become aware of it. Overall, we have had a strong positive response and good press through the Marin IJ and KCBS radio. We look forward to the program becoming a greater success. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you so much, Emma. And can I just give a tiny correction? You said Elsie and Broadway, but you mean Elsie and Bank, right?
Yeah.
Just so that people know, you can look for those flags. That's a very...
Is that...
Bellinas.
Bellinas?
Oh, that's why. Sorry.
Well, it's the Elsie-Bank loop, but yes, it's at the intersection of Elsie and Bellinas.
Whoops. Okay.
But perfect. We knew where you were.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
Not so fast. Going back. Did you notice of the people who didn't use the flag, did you sort of say to yourself, "That's a person that should have used the flag"?
Yeah, and we did try to, like, stop people. "Hey, can you use the flags?"" And it was either people just walking really fast, ignoring us, people on their phones, like, the first person we saw when we were starting to monitor just walked right by, so...
What I'm sort of getting at is, like, the other day, I walked by there. I didn't use the flag, but, you know, but in a couple of years, I'm going to be really old and I'm going to want to use the flag. So I'm kind of wondering, were there a couple of people that you said to yourself, "Hey, that person should have used the flag," and chose not to do so for one reason or another? Or did you find that everybody who you thought should use the flag actually did?
Well, I think everyone should use them. So I don't really know how to answer that question, but I know a lot of times, people would start to walk in. We had to remind them, "Hey, can you use this flag?"" Or they'd walk and they'd look at it and they'd turn back, or... I know a lot of people who had strollers didn't want to do it, bicycles didn't want to do it. Oh, but people found a way to use it.
Last thing, I'm sure you haven't considered it yet, but when you're thinking about it, consider a career in the law.
Thank you.
Politics.
It's the people who didn't use the flag talking on their phone, they're the most likely to get hit.
Yeah, too.
But I'm also really encouraged that the initial percentages of people using it for the very first time was really high. I thought, you know, maybe 5%, 10% would, and then gradually increase. But so that's really encouraging, and it just really shows, you know, it was an idea whose time has come. So thank you so much for thinking about it and making it happen.
Thank you.
Staff?
Mayor, I just want to say, the flags actually went out on Friday before we launched, but the first person who used it was River Brandburg with his grandmother, Susan Brandberg, who used to be on this council. And I understand our building official took a video, so at some point, maybe we can show that briefly. It's cute. Thank you.
Staff, is the flashing beacon operational on Taylor and Sir Francis Drake?
Actually, I was going to report on that on the Town Manager Report.
Oh, okay.
But the answer is no, we're waiting for some parts.
Okay. I was just going to say that along the same lines, Emma, where you see people don't take flags when they really could, and they're very useful. We do have flashing beacon systems on center and one soon to be at Taylor and Sir Francis Drake that often people don't use. And so I watch people wave down cars to stop before they push the button, so look for all these safety improvements. And thanks again. So we did not go and approve the agenda, so I'd like to...
So moved.
Go back and...
Second.
Anything to be moved around?
I think I would just like to make a couple of comments on consent calendar items, but not move them around. And so I would second the motion.
So the agenda carries as is?
I'll...
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get this, we'll get on track here. Alrighty. So moving right on, we have a presentation this evening on One Plan: Bay Area 2040. And this presentation will be delivered by the Association of Bay Area Governments. And I would like to welcome them and thank them for coming to educate us. Good evening.
Good evening. Let me just situate it. Okay. I think I can do that. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Goddard, Vice Mayor Reed, councilmembers Kohler, Weinshof, and Lacks. I'm Hing Wong, Senior Regional Planner with Association of Bay Area Governments. I'd also like to introduce Brad Paul, who is our ABAG Deputy Executive Director, and he lives just down the street from here, so he's like one of your neighbors. Not in Fairfax, but in the next town, two towns over. So thank you for having us here today. I'll give a short presentation on Plan Bay Area 2040. There are two regional agencies, and we are in charge of helping to plan long-range transportation, land use, and housing in the nine Bay Area counties. In 2013, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, MTC, as well as ABAG, Association of Bay Area Governments, adopted Plan Bay Area. This was the first integrated long-range transportation and land use housing plan for the San Francisco Bay region that addresses the challenge of accommodating projected growth. The plan integrates transportation and land use to better align jobs and housing within the region, transportation network, and to reduce greenhouse gas emission. The plan distributes growth to areas with greater accessibilities to transit, jobs, centers, shopping centers, schools, recreation, and other amenities, while planning for environment that better supports walking and biking. MTC and ABAG is now preparing to update the initial Plan Bay Area, and this one is called Plan Bay Area 2040. So the difference between the two plans is this has the number 2040 after it. There are nine counties and 101 cities and towns in this region. The region is very diverse, and each community is unique. Plan Bay Area is a region-wide plan that incorporates each jurisdiction in shaping the future of our communities. By law, the requirements of Plan Bay Area is to reduce greenhouse gases, but there are also many other shared concerns for our communities. The main concerns for many residents are to maintain and improve on the quality of life, keep in check the cost of housing, manage traffic while improving transit, repair existing infrastructure, protect the environment, and maintain local control of planning decisions. Through the partnerships of regional agencies such as ours, the local jurisdictions and working groups, we have an engagement that is critical to the success of Plan Bay Area. We are continually getting feedback from the jurisdiction planning staff. There are 188 PDAs, which is Priority Development Areas, and 165 PCA, Priority Conservation Areas, across the region. As you can see from this map, they are spread throughout the Bay Area. However, there are no PDAs in Fairfax. Priority Development Areas are locally nominated areas where amenities and services can be developed to meet the day-to-day needs of residents in a pedestrian-friendly environment served by transit. Priority Conservation Areas are locally identified areas that preserve important agricultural, recreational, and environmentally sensitive areas. How does Plan Bay Area work? In 2008, California Pass Senate Bill 375, which guides local and regional coordination of land use and transportation planning with the goal of reducing automobile greenhouse gas emission by 15% in the year 2035. SB 375 is the Sustainable Community Strategy, also known as SCS, which mandates the regional planning agencies to develop a plan. In the Bay Area, the plan is called Plan Bay Area. Even though some may think of land use, housing, and transportation as three completely separate things, they are, in fact, connected to each other. Plan Bay Area PDAs focus growth strategies through housing and employment investments that are associated with existing and planned transit. This enables the development of complete communities that are vibrant and successful as well as preserving and enhancing connection to the Bay Area natural beauty. Prior to the SCS, Plan Bay Area and the Regional Transportation Plan, also known as RTP, and the Regional Housing Need Allocation, known as RENA, were processed separately through individual regional agency. Now, there is consistency and alignment between the policies and the requirements of each plan and policies. The Plan Bay Area is updated once every four years on a four-year cycle. The Regional Housing Need Allocation, RENA, is updated once every eight years on an eight-year cycle. So RENA will be associated with the next cycle of Plan Bay Area. Similarly, the housing element is now on an eight-year cycle, so most housing elements is up to the year 2023. Plan Bay Area is a work in progress that is updated every four years to reflect new priorities. In some cases, new legislations or additional resources will be needed to fully utilize and realize the vision as well as to implement the plan, policies, and programs. There are five milestones to this plan. Goal-setting and performance targets were developed in early 2015. Regional jobs, housing, and population data was collected and analyzed in late 2015. Performance from transportation projects and assessments are currently being developed. Three scenarios are being developed that will be presented to public workshops that are scheduled for May and June of this year. The adoption of the plan is scheduled for the late summer 2017 after the Environmental Impact Report, which is the EIR, has been completed. There are different ways that we can grow. Scenario planning is a way to analyze and communicate the effectiveness of different combination of land use and transportation strategies on regional goals and targets. Scenarios can articulate alternatives, future paths, and provide information in understanding the trade-offs. Scenarios can be constructed to analyze and evaluate strategies that may be practically or politically challenging, and engage in a thoughtful dialogue about planning for our common future. In all three scenarios, the regional total is the same. The difference is how the numbers get distributed. So having three distinct scenarios gives us all an opportunity to evaluate and receive comments on how we want the region to grow. So there are scenario one, two, and three, and I'm actually going to start with number three, speaking about that. This is the Big Three scenario, meaning the big three cities of San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose. This scenario is where most of the growth takes place in these three big cities, and to areas adjacent or linked to transit to the Big Three Cities. This scenario's increased density within those areas, especially in PDAs, and along corridors. Most of the funds, funding and investment are directed to those areas. Oops. Sorry. I shouldn't have gone backward. So this scenario is called the Main Street Scenario, where development is dispersed throughout the region with only modest growth and investment in the Big Three Cities. Jobs are spread throughout the region. As growth is spread throughout, less percent of the growth is in the PDAs, while more growth can occur outside the PDAs. So those areas that do not have PDAs will probably see a moderate amount of growth. This scenario, number one, is the only one which may allow for some greenfield development, and that's slightly beyond urban growth boundaries. This scenario, number two, is called the Connected Neighborhood Scenario, and it is more balanced with development along major transit corridors and other transit lines connecting to the Big Three Cities. A lot of it happens around the two main corridors, from San Francisco down the peninsula to San Jose, and then up the other side, the East Bay Corridor, up to Oakland and towards It will increase residential development in all the PDAs and less growth outside the PDAs. So again, more growth for this scenario will happen within the PDAs. Reduced parking minimums in the PDAs along the corridors are also sought after because there is a high level of transit options. ABAG and MTC request that local jurisdiction participate in the scenario development process and the transportation investment prioritization process. The major milestones for local jurisdiction participation are noted here. The first set of numbers for the draft scenarios will be out sometime in early May. Then, the public workshops will be scheduled for May and June. There will be one workshop per county, so we'll have one workshop here in Marin. So what does this all mean? We are working closely with your staff to ensure that there is participation in reviewing the scenarios and the data. We'll work with city staff to keep the council informed. There are a number of ways to stay involved and informed. You can subscribe to the mailing list, provide comments via email, check out the Plan Bay Area website, or contact the MTC or ABAG planning directors, and their names and phone numbers, emails are listed right there. And again, this slideshow will be posted. So at this time, I'd be happy to entertain some questions or comments. Thank you.
I have just a logistics question. Where is this presentation going to be posted?
Well, I think it's with the town, so you guys might have a copy of it.
I have a copy. If the council wants me to post a link to it on the website, I can do that.
Maybe a link rather than posting the actual document. And then, I got a little confused on the scenarios because you kept relating it back to the three big cities. I guess from what I heard, the first scenario is more the Main Street scenario, which is more a Fairfax thing. Did I misunderstand what you said? I just got confused because you kept relating it to the big cities.
Sure.
So I was trying to figure out... I think that's where we fit.
Yeah. It would be probably... Well, okay. There are different ways to look at it, actually. You know, each of the scenarios have different objectives in terms of where the growth will be distributed. So for like the three big cities, most of the growth will be in those three big cities. So we have a regional total for a number of population, households, and jobs. So if the big three cities take more of the growth, then less will be distributed, you know, to other cities within the region. In terms of the Main Streets, that could be something because you guys have a very nice town corridor here, you know. And even the scenario two, which is the Connecting Neighborhoods, could be... So when we run the modeling and stuff like that, I think Fairfax could fit really in any of those, and any of those three scenarios.
Do you think the third scenario, which has PDAs? We don't have any PDAs. I'm just not sure how that works. Maybe I'm just confused? Yeah, maybe a clarification would help.
So I think from, depending on what you want, how you want the community to grow, you would have an interest in one, two, or three of the scenarios. So the scenario that's called the Main Street Scenario, which is mostly just growth wherever people think and wherever developers want to build it, would probably result in you getting higher numbers going forward for Plan Bay Area. The first, the other two, the one which is the big cities, most of this new development would go in the big cities, or in the big cities and the quarters that connect them. So with either scenario two or three, which is where that happens, you would get much less growth going forward than if we did scenario one, where it's just sort of spread everywhere, and it's not concentrated in PDAs. So I think that's from the community's point of view. It's sort of how much more growth do you and Fairfax see happening here in town? If you want less growth going forward, you'd probably want to see either scenario two or three be the preferred scenario.
Okay. Well, I guess what I don't see is kind of looking at what's kind of happening in a lot of Marin, and particularly in Fairfax. So what we've done in our housing element is a lot of reliance on second units, junior second units, and, you know, a couple of areas where senior housing in one area, but not highly dense, but more dense in some areas.
Right.
About 40 to 60. And then a couple of other kind of prime locations for potential workforce housing and something of that like. So I'm not really sure that those, any of those scenarios really fit what we're looking at, which is we know what's happening in Marin. There's not tremendous growth. And so I guess one of the suggestions I have is maybe to look at your, what you're doing and look at this kind of model, which is, we still want to grow and have affordable housing for people who work here and people who might have to move out because they can't afford it. But we want to do it in a way that preserves kind of the small-town character, and so we don't need a very large apartment complex. So all I'm suggesting is, I didn't really see that any of those scenarios kind of fit, you know, our model, which is more, you know, it is interspersing it throughout town with a few more dense types of places to live, but not hugely dense.
And I think...
So I guess I would just suggest, maybe there's... So I guess I would just suggest maybe there's something to look at there.
I think you raised a good point, which is that the scenarios are more about the amount of development in different types of communities, not how you would actually build it. And we need to talk a little bit about that because in a number of smaller communities, both in Marin and other parts of the Bay Area, people feel the way that you do. Here in Marin, we all know about Wind Cup. People don't want to see any more Wind Cups, which is a huge dense development in Cordera Madera. So a number of communities, including yours here in Fairfax and Nevada, have adopted ordinances to make it easier to do second units, accessory units, junior accessory units, and that is a, is a very logical way to go, to get more housing without changing the character of the community. What we can help you do is, right now, you don't get full credit for that from the State Office of Housing Community Development in terms of meeting your RENA numbers. And we think that's a mistake. We think that, right now, you can only get credit for up to twenty-five percent of your RENA numbers through accessory dwelling units. That's an artificial number, and we would, we would look forward to working with you and other cities and towns to change that rule so you can get more credit for that. Because you want to encourage communities that want to do that to do it, and by penalizing them in terms of how much credit they get in their RENA numbers, that doesn't really do that. So I think you've led the way, along with Nevada and other communities, in doing that, which is a logical way to create, not only create a lot of additional units, but you get it fairly quickly. And with the junior accessory units, the fees are not thousands or tens of thousands dollars for hookups for water and electricity, but a couple hundred dollars to do that. So I think the more we can work with you to encourage that and help you do that, the better for the region.
And I think that's great. I think maybe the way to make this presentation resonate a little more is for our communities, which might be a little bit different, maybe is to add something on that so that we understand that ABAG is interested in helping kind of build that sort of approach. And maybe it's not another scenario, but maybe it's just bringing it up.
As you're saying that, I can think of slides we could put up there saying, regardless of whether you have a this number or this number, we want to make sure that the solutions that come up in your community are the ones that you generate and you want. We could use examples, so we could have slides from Marin of very small infill projects, of accessory dwelling units, of the kinds of things you were just talking about a minute ago. If we had slides of those from Marin, I think would help make that point.
Can I, can, I want to ask, let everyone ask questions, but just as a matter of clarification, I think we're talking, it seems to me we're talking on a macro and a little micro level here, and that when you presented these three scenarios, we're talking about an entire regional approach to this. We will be weighing in, making comments, virtually, you know, voting for which scenario we think is best fitting for the region and how we fit into the region. So we're not going to say, well, Fairfax wants scenario two, and, you know, San Rafael thinks scenario one is better, or, this is us weighing in on what the ultimate decision will be for the region, correct? And then how we meet our RENA numbers as things unfold subsequent to that decision being made will be things like how we're going to advocate for, you know, counting our junior accessory units for a higher RENA. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that I understand we're not all voting for our own scenario. The scenario will be one scenario that's agreed upon by the entire Bay Area. Am I correct?
That's correct. And the scenario, the scenario we'll talk about how there's going to be, because there were so many jobs in the last few years, particularly in San Francisco and Silicon Valley, the projected need for housing is going to go up. And so that extra housing has to be distributed somewhere. The scenarios help decide where that goes. So if you'd rather see that go to the big cities and the larger communities between those big cities, scenario two and scenario three would do that for the region. If you think that there ought to be a lot more housing in Marin than there is currently planned for, then you might want to advocate for scenario one. But you're right, it's a sort of mega-region scenario about how you distribute the future growth and the jobs.
But wait a minute. In the recent, or the last month's issue of the North Bay Business Magazine that I think is, is well put together, there was an analysis of where jobs are and are not going in Marin County, and they actually, I think, highlighted the fact that while there are the Bio-Marins, which are almost the exception to the rule, and that we are people living here but, but working in other places. So that glut that you see of tremendous economic development in San Francisco, South Market, or down in Silicon Valley, might not happen here. So the density is what is causing aggravation to the communities. The solution that seems to be arising here of the junior second units and the other thing, seem to be a bottom-up response to localized conditions and not reflective of something Bay Area-wide. It's within the curtilage of our small, insular little town, and the concerns that we have for ensuring that our kids can come back to live here, or some of the workers that are working here can afford to work here and live as well. So I'm listening to what you're saying, and I'm trying to see how small-town Fairfax fits into this larger picture, which, by the way, grieves me because when I think of 2040, my immediate reaction is, well, I'll be eighty-two.
I'll be even older.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, I, well, with, you know, the growth in jobs where there's, what's driving this is really SB 375 and, and, you know, the fact that we're trying to keep from dying from climate change here, and really having housing close to where the jobs are makes sense. I mean, there are some people here, I mean, the price of housing is a problem for many people. There's a lot of people, certainly renters especially, that are finding it difficult to stay here, and a lot of our, you know, junior second units and stuff is trying to address that in terms of our local community. And there are, you know, some people that are driving from here to Silicon Valley, but, you know, not that many. You know, and obviously, that's going to happen in a, in a free country where people can pretty much do what they want, but they're going to be making decisions based on how big of a daily penalty they're paying by, you know, having to sit in a car a couple hours each way. And hopefully, that will kind of help steer the market. But I mean, what we were having with, you know, sprawling developments being built in Tracy and people commuting from there into Silicon Valley, you know, that we saw in, you know, prior to the '08 crash, you know, is really something that I think Plan Bay Area is trying to avoid, or at least manage in a little bit saner way, you know? I mean, I, that, that's what I believe is driving this whole thing, isn't it?
That's correct. And, and part of it is, as a couple of you mentioned, there's been a huge boom in jobs, both in San Francisco and in Silicon Valley. And some of those companies and jobs are now migrating to the East Bay, to Oakland is the one we all read about, but also Richmond, Vallejo. And that actually is not a bad thing because people don't have to drive all the way from those communities into San Francisco or Silicon Valley. They can drive a much shorter distance to go to jobs closer to them. It's less greenhouse gas, and it's also less time they spend in their cars and more time they can spend with their families. So those are the kinds of things that our research and planning department look at, and look at, are there things, are there policy things we can do to make it easier for that to happen when communities want that to happen?
Well, makes sense. I mean, it's...
Peter.
Yes, I just want to echo our, my fellow councilman, Bruce, emphasis that we really, in Fairfax, an approach that allows us to do more second units is really a very useful approach for us. We're built out, we don't have many places that we can build more housing, more affordable housing. And so, would really encourage you to, you know, as much as you can, advocate for relaxing that limitation on second units because that's an approach that works for us. As we try to fashion a housing element that meets the state's approval, the general template that the state seems to have just doesn't quite work for Fairfax because we're, of the constraints that we have, being a small town with geographical limitations and so forth. So would really like to see and encourage that kind of flexibility. And then, one quick question. You mentioned that there's going to be a Marin County workshop, and wondering if you have a location and date for that yet?
I believe it's, is it April?
May 21st.
May, I'm sorry. May 21st, and I think it's going to be at the Nevada City Hall.
Okay.
And there'll be details to follow. I'll make sure to bring it back from the next delegate meeting.
Okay, so anyone watching on the internet, that's an important opportunity to be able to participate in this process.
And just to answer your question, as Hing mentioned, I live just two towns over in San Rafael. I started off, we moved from San Francisco to Sausalito, and Sausalito-Greenbry, and then we just bought a house this summer in, in San Rafael. And we actually have a legal shed in the back of our house. My wife and I are talking about looking at ways to expand that and convert it to an accessory dwelling unit. My son's sitting back there, he's twelve and a half right now, but eventually, he's going to get a job and go to college, and we want to have the ability for him or people like him to stay in the community. So we are huge supporters. I am personally, and my family's looking into an accessory dwelling unit for our own house because it's just, it makes sense in communities like Fairfax, San Rafael, Sausalito, as a way to create units that are easy to do, relatively inexpensive, and fairly quick.
Brad, since you're here, there was a lot of talk not too far back, and I think it will come again, about the merger between ABAG and MTC. You were explaining to me that there's a workshop that people can attend to learn more about what's going on there. Some of these key dates would be great to, to have, to post and to at least put out there right now to anyone who's listening.
We can send you, and we'll be sending to all elected officials soon, a notice on that. I know Pat Eklund from Nevada is also being, is going to be in touch with all of our delegates. But there is, just to quickly recap, you all remember last fall, there was an effort by MTC to cut off the funding they've been giving us for decades for planning and just take thirteen or fifteen of our planners. It was a non-consensual conversation, I think is the politest way I can put it. But there was huge pushback from the hundred cities, hundred and one cities in the Bay Area, and also, our staff, Hing and everyone else, are members of SEIU Local 1021, and MTC has its own in-house union but not affiliated with anyone. So the combination of the pushback from the cities and from the union got us to where we are now, which is to put that plan on hold, to hire a very good consulting firm called Management Partners, and they have until June to come up with a, a plan and a series of recommendations for how we could collaborate better with MTC up to and including full merger. And so they have done a lot of research about how other regions in California do this, how they do the both land use and transportation planning. They've looked at Washington DC area, Chicago, and Puget Sound. They presented that at the last meeting of the Joint MTC Planning, ABAG Administrative Committee, who are managing this process. They have an online survey they're doing of all elected officials in the region, which you'll probably get a copy of. But they're also having, by region, public workshops so the general public can come and other stakeholders and give their input. And that will be, I believe, March 14th, and it will be here in Marin. I think it's going to be in Nevada as well, but I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, if you could just send us, you know, to confirm those dates.
But that's so, I mean, you're welcome to come, but people in the audience or anyone in the region that's interested in this issue can come, hear what's happening. At the next joint planning and admin committee meeting of ABAG and MTC, they will be presenting a number of options they want, they want to research. So they'll present five, six, seven options that would work to, toward that goal of better collaboration up to including merger. That will be discussed, and then they will dive deep into all of those options, and then come back in April with a recommendation for how we could go forward, in a consensual way.
Great. So does anyone in the public have any questions? If you, if you do, you have to come forward and just use the mic. Come on. Don't be shy. And just, just say your name and...
Okay. Hi, I'm Kirsten. I live in Fairfax, Three Roca. Just a quick question about the actual subject of convincing, maybe that's the wrong term, but convincing this group that we are a small town and that we do indeed need to have these units considered, and that we are unique. I got concerned when I heard that you said we had, you, the region has to come up with a consensus around who we are, what our identity is. Well, what if Fairfax is one of the few towns that votes one way, and then the larger towns vote, well, we want to be Main Street, we want to be Scenario One. Where does that put us? So, thank you.
Thank you. Brad?
I think it's a very good question, and I think my best answer would be, I started at ABAG about three years ago, and my first conversation with the mayor of Cordera Madera was, she came up to me and said, why won't you let us build second units? And build assisted living? And I said, what do you mean, won't let you? And what she was describing was how HCD won't give credit for that. And I told her I had just read, and this was three years ago, that I think forty percent of the single-family homes in Marin are lived in by one person. And I said, we should not be discouraging people from creating second units or building assisted living. We should be creating incentives to do that. The idea that you get penalized is the craziest thing I've ever heard. And she looked at me and said, who do you work for? And I said, that's our job. ABAG's job is to advocate for the cities, the hundred and one cities and towns that make up the Bay Area, for local solutions that work for your community, not a one-size-fits-all plan. What Hing was talking about earlier is sort of the larger way we approach this. But if Fairfax wants to fulfill their housing needs, mostly through junior second units and accessory dwelling units, and very small infill projects, not fifty, hundred-unit projects, but A6, A10 unit buildings, if that's what you want, we're here to support you in that and work with you to get HCD to make that easier, not harder, to do. So my answer is that we do see every community is unique, and I personally grew up in a town in Massachusetts that was the size of Fairfax. We had eight thousand people growing up. I moved out of San Francisco, which is a big city, to Sausalito, which has about eight thousand people in it. So I understand small towns, I love small towns, and I live in small towns. So I think that we can be a very effective advocate for whatever kind of development you think makes sense, to accept the kind of growth you decided you want where you want it.
You know, I know the time's getting on, but I just, the concern that I can hear brewing, even though I can't see the people who it might be brewing in, is that the idea that there needs to be a consensus, that we choose one scenario. And how is that chosen, and where's the ultimate authority lie, and those kinds of questions in the end? And I'm assuming that at the open house public workshop, we're going to be able to get really super, super clear on that, so people don't leave thinking, well, I wonder who's going to make that decision. That's, I think, a concern that I'm going to hear around town.
So I'd like, I'd like Hing to address this, but I think maybe another way to explain this is, in order to do an EIR for whatever plan we want to support, we have to analyze a number of different ways for the region to grow. So the scenarios, all three scenarios will be analyzed, and we will get information from that that says, if you do scenario one, it's going to have these impacts on the region. You do scenario two, you do scenario three, it'll have those. In the end, the plan could be parts of each scenario, and they could be different for different parts of the region. But the scenarios are a piece, a step we have to go through to both understand and analyze how growth might affect the region and give you all that information so you can decide, or make it easier to decide, which of the scenarios you think works for you. Is that a, is that a fair description of it?
Yeah, as Paul mentioned, and I talked about earlier, there's three scenarios, and so when we do the workshops, we want to get public input, but even though there will be a preferred scenario chosen from the three, that doesn't mean that, and they're draft numbers, that doesn't mean that the numbers can't be shifted up or down, you know, depending on what the community really desires. So, so even though a scenario, a preferred scenario might be chosen, if, like, say for instance, Fairfax number is a little bit too high in that number, there's ways to probably, you know, adjust the numbers downward for some communities.
You're referring to RENA numbers?
No, not RENA numbers. The, the numbers that will be in the Plan Bay Area. The RENA numbers are the RENA numbers for, from 2014 to 2022.
Colleagues, are you feeling clear?
There's, 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 I think, it's, it's a hard intellectual nut to conceptualize. On the one hand, you have your development plan and program and idea, just jump in and tell me if I'm wrong on this. But on the other hand, you have sort of a top-down, you shall plan for X number of units. And the concern in Fairfax is this imposition from the top down. So what we were talking about before was solving the problem from the bottom up, and anybody listening would be enthused by the solution that you're suggesting, junior second unit, you know, that you, that ABAG embraces the local solution. But it's a local solution to a top-down imposition that gives agita to the, to the community. And I, and I think there's where that disconnect is. In other words, we would love you to say to us, please solve a problem that only you understand and know. understand and know, and you will resolve it in a way that's most appropriate for your community. But that problem is one that only you will understand, not us in Sacramento or other places, requiring you to build X by Y date with big hammers. So that's sort of, I think, the disconnect that this community, and I'm sure others, somehow feel.
Yeah, and just to try to clarify that again, the RENA number that was adopted, like, two, three years ago, is eight-year RENA cycle number. So those numbers do not change, even though we are preparing and planning a new planned Bay Area. These are just, these are numbers that are sort of, that, you know, hopefully, communities could use to, you know, for either their general plans or other planning mechanism for planning their communities.
I'm just gonna have to jump in here on this. You seem to think that they're suggestive. We feel as if they're a hard hammer, and I kind of feel that we're right. Because if we don't write a general housing element that attends to those numbers, bad things are gonna happen to us. So we don't believe that they are soft suggestions.
So what could we do to make them softer?
Go away.
Well, I'll pass that suggestion along, but I think another way to think of it is, the state is charging us, MTC and ABAG, with coming up with a plan that one could make a credible argument, we reduce greenhouse gases by X, by 15%, by whatever the number is. And so the plan will say, well, if a certain number of things happen in the next few years, that will work. And if most of the development takes place in San Francisco, Oakland, and San Jose, there won't be much change in the numbers for places like Fairfax, or Corder Medera, or, you know, Clayton out in the East Bay. But that will result in greenhouse gases going down by X. The numbers in that plan are goals, and if those goals are reached, they'll have this impact on greenhouse gases. But I have to tell you that this is for this four-year planned Bay Area. I will be willing to bet you dinner at your favorite restaurant that in a couple of years, when we do this analysis again, the job number, which just went like this, is gonna go like this and maybe go down. And I can tell you why. I am on a committee in San Francisco for that Twitter tax deal. All those companies have to do a community benefits agreement, and I was appointed to that committee because I spent a lot of time there, and I know a lot about housing. And about six months ago, the people from the companies, I'm talking about Twitter, Zendesk, Spotify, Zuzk, Yammer, all the companies that are the hot, big companies, came to us to answer three questions. How are the housing prices in San Francisco affecting your ability to hire people, retain them, and expand? And every single one of them said they have stopped hiring people in San Francisco, because they have to pay somebody $200,000 a year for them to afford the average two-bedroom apartment in San Francisco. They don't want to commute 50 or 100 miles. So what they're doing is, Zendesk, which is a very strong company, their new people they hire, their entry-level people, they're sending to Madison, Wisconsin, because it's so much cheaper to live there. Some of them they're sending to Dublin, Ireland, because it's so much cheaper to live there. And you're hearing this anecdotally all the time, and if you read the Chronicle and the Business Times, you see companies laying off, was it Zenefits just laid off 30% of their workforce?
Survey Monkey's just, Survey Monkey's gonna lay off 100.
Yeah, so I think we can safely say, and this is anecdotal, and this is me speaking personally at this point, the bubble's about to burst. We're not gonna go into recession, but the kind of increases in jobs that we are looking at now will level off and go down. It's a cycle. Businesses run in cycles. So in the next version of planned Bay Area, I'm willing to bet that the housing numbers we're seeing now, the higher numbers, will be somewhat adjusted down because of the reality of the economy. But what really matters to you, as Hing was saying, is your RENA numbers, and they don't change until 2021. That's the only number you're being held accountable for, not any number in planned Bay Area. It's a suggestion, it's a goal, but there is no hammer, that I'm aware of.
I appreciate everything you're gonna say. So if I had to leave you with one thought, almost every decision that is made by this council, that staff, and our planning commission, is how do we claw our way to a reality in which I call it the Glacamoroth Syndrome? Nothing ever changes. We want Fairfax to say, pretty much, just like it is. And every decision that we make, I think, is funneled through that reality. And so when folks from away come and suggest our responsibilities, if you will, in a, in a larger environment, we would rather meet our responsibilities to the global community in the manner in which we see fit, not in the manner in which a state sees fit to impose upon us. Might be selfish, but...
Well, no, I would, I would beg to differ. I don't think it's selfish, I think it's realistic. We have shelves in this country of plans people have spent a lot of money on, that have sat on a shelf and never been implemented. The plans that matter most are the ones that the local community wants implemented. I would rather personally see you build 50 units than have a plan to build 1,000 units and build 20 units. And what we need to do is build more housing. It doesn't matter the type of housing. If you want to build secondary units, and that's what you feel works in this community to keep the quality of life in this community and the character of this community, I think we support that. You're not saying no housing at all, you're saying we want to build this type of housing. San Francisco has a different answer to that question, Oakland has a different answer. So I think what we, what we're doing, coming and talking to groups like yours and listening to city councils, is to get that kind of feedback. So when Hing goes back to do the next iteration of this plan, it incorporates those ideas. That's why we're here tonight.
Okay. Excellent. Hing, thank you so much, and Brad, thank you as well. Much appreciated. Good presentation. Okay.
You gonna stay here for the rest of the meeting?
Well, there's no Warrior game tonight, so perhaps he's in...
All right, everyone. So moving right along to the consent calendar.
Can I make just one? There's a typo. On page five of the minutes, Michelle, it was Tim Nardell, it was just listed down as Rydel. It's Tim Nardell, N-A-D-E-L-L, and that's important for us to note.
Okay.
I have one suggestion change in the minute. On page six, my comment about, after the no vote on the medical marijuana cultivation, it kind of cut off my comment where it says, "And not mix it." It should say something more like, "Not mix it in with a discussion of ordinance regarding delivery or dispensaries." Thank you.
Anything else on consent? Barbara?
I just want to make a couple comments. On item five, the Fairfax Open Space Committee, I want to thank them for all their hard work their last two years. It's been a lot of accomplishments. And one of the biggies was acquisition of Sky Ranch. There's also Upper Ridgeway, donate piece of property. So a lot has happened, and it took a long time coming for a lot of that work. So I want to thank them on that. One thing on item seven, the Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative Report, I appreciate all the work of that group. And I know we're just receiving the report, but it also said we want to recommend funding the future, and I'm totally supportive of that. The one piece that troubles me is, there was lobbying done against a local business, and I'm not supportive of that. I think advocacy for legislation or regulations is appropriate, and so that seems good, but I'd like to make sure that we don't do that in the future.
Okay. Just a quick response to that is that I have spoken with the other core members on the board there, and there is agreement with that, and we will talk more about how we might clarify that, and how it might show up in our, in our mission and goals going forward.
Great. And then, thank you, Renee, and then, or Mayor, thank you. And then on item eight, which is the Fairfax Department of Recreation and Community Services Annual Report, I want to thank that department, and I know Ann put, Ann Manis put this report together, so thank you so much. I just have one question, and that is, I know we're looking to add other senior programs, and I know we had one that was scheduled. Dawn Oltman was gonna do some music for seniors, and I know due to an accident, she wasn't able to do it, but is that something we're looking at for next six months or so? Maybe we could just get a brief answer on that, otherwise I think it's great.
So we are, with the allocation of the senior funding, we're pretty much maxed out with the chair yoga, but, and Dawn and I haven't spoken, but I'm sure we could arrange some kind of class or offering again. The development of the senior program kind of depends on the community and who comes to me and who kind of wants to build things. So we're always open to ideas and how we can get those things started. And then I'm working with Jody Timms, as you all know, to get some funding to do some other type of things.
Great. Just one suggestion is, maybe at the senior lunch, that might be, I know you're not a senior, but maybe it might be...
I love going there, yeah.
And maybe an opportunity is to talk to some of the seniors and see if there are things that they're interested in, so we could add something else.
Implement some more, yeah.
If we can, that would be wonderful. But I want to thank all of you, you, Ann, and Maria, and Camille, for all your hard work on, you know, our recreation department. You've done an incredible job.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I do. I wish there was a more graceful way to really express our gratitude, because we get to just say, this looks like it should happen, and people say, we like this, and then we say it to you, and it has been just really beautifully executed. And the facilities look great, and people are happy, and there's a lot of life that hasn't always been quite so actively engaged and cared for. So I just echo what Barbara said, really, a lot of gratitude for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to move the consent calendar with all of the changes that were recommended.
Madam Mayor, public comment?
Is there any public comment on consent? Seeing none, let's bring it back to council. Mr. Weinsoff?
Move the consent calendar with all of the recommended changes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so motion, Weinsoff, second read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let's, let's begin with the first of the public hearing items. Wrong. Okay, I'm sorry, Garberino family. We will go through a council member reports and comments.
Well, I'll jump in.
David?
Very quickly, because I do want to get to our important public hearing and agenda items. Two MCC events, the dinner that many of us attended, and the ledge committee that meets monthly, the Ross Valley Fire Department with John. And finally, the flood meeting on attending to the Lefty Gomez proposal that a bunch of us attended right after the council meeting last month. Thank you.
Barbara?
Okay. Similar to David, a lot of us attended the flood planning meeting at White Hill School, and I was one of those folks. I also attended the Fairfax Climate Action Committee meeting, and part of what we're doing is talking about how we can get the word out about the Deep Green Incentive Program, so we'll be starting tabling on that. And then I attended the Marin Telecommunications Agency Board Meeting, also the Marin Clean Energy Meeting, and just one thing on that, there will be a slight rate increase on Marin Clean Energy, but it's really about the PCIA charge, which is something PG&E charges. Otherwise, we have voted to keep the rates the same, but there will be an increase that you'll see that's part of that charge. And then I also attended the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Meeting, and we had a really good speaker, Vivian Strauss, who's the sister of the fellow who owns the Strauss Dairy. And she talked a lot about the importance of ranches in West Marin, and she was a great speaker. And I also attended the Community Media Center of Marin Board Meeting, and these are the folks who televise our meetings. And I'm proud to be part of that group, and we just did a big fundraising of board members and a challenge, and we don't raise tons of money, but for us, it's, it's pretty good. I think we raised about $7,000, and we're gonna do another challenge in a few months. So with that, thank you.
Okay. John?
Yeah. Briefly, I guess, I also attended the fireboard meeting with David, and also the interesting meeting about the yellow school bus system, basically Golden Gate Transit no longer, as people, anybody with a White Hill student knows, that, that the Golden Gate buses are no longer having kids on them, we have yellow school buses instead, and they're being managed by Marin Transit. And they're fairly expensive, but they do a great job. And it actually is working pretty well with the kids, and we're kind of looking at pitfalls going forward, especially maybe the multi-age program or something like that, you know, who knows exactly how that's gonna develop? But, you know, I'm sure that yellow school buses might play a part in that, too, going And it does have a lot less traffic as a result of having these yellow school buses. So, you know, we're all, we gotta do that, I think, down the road. You know, there may be us budgetarily participating and a little bit more in that. Let me see, also the MCC MC meeting and a Transportation Authority Marin meeting. And I met with various individuals about the pedestrian trails thing going on. Right now, there's a trail that's halfway completed between Tamalpais and Scenic, and as far as Midway Lane there. So these are very useful for people getting up and down in the hills, just getting around or walking, and in the event of an emergency, they could be lifesaving. So there's a lot of good reasons for those. Also, the other thing that I did was a bicycle pedestrian committee meeting where we're basically talking about the next iteration of the update of the general plan in relation to bicycles and pedestrians. And that was in this room last night with our mayor, Renee. And that's my report.
Peter?
Thank you. I didn't have any committee meetings this month, kind of a slow month. I did attend also the workshop put on by Flood District 9 at White Hill School about, discussion about the proposed detention basin at Lefty Gomez Field.
And, yeah, not too many things this month. Did attend the Flood Zone 9 workshop at White Hill. We did have an important Ross Valley Healthy Community Collaborative Meeting of the board, which is the core five of us, and then there's about 30 members who come and participate frequently. And this was a review of a survey that was sent out to all of the Tam Union High School District parents, and was also filled out by all of the students. Incredibly high participation rate in this survey, and it had to do with wellness at our high schools. Tam Union High School District right now is considering whether they're going to continue a funding plan to fund wellness centers at, at both Drake High School and at Tam, as they do at Redwood High School. So right now, it's very important that parents be heard by the board if you think that wellness is a good way for us to, or for the board to spend our money going forward. I encourage you to look up the wellness program at Redwood High School. There will be a meeting on, I didn't write it down, March 8th, actually, next week. There'll be a presentation of the wellness program at the Tam Union High School District Board, Board Meeting. And I attended the Alta Planning Public Input Session, which is what John was referring to, about the bicycle pedestrian plan update. And then this morning was the Local Task Force meeting, the Advisory Committee to the JPA on solid and hazardous waste, which is a great lead into our next, our next presentation, which is also a public hearing item. So, yeah, moving right along. Thank you. We do this by committee, I appreciate it. Before we do that, Garrett?
So, quickly, I thought I'd give you an update on our improvements to the women's club, if you haven't...
club, if you haven't noticed them, but you remember last year that council authorized a remodel of the restroom in the women's club, as well as upgrade to the sound system, so at that time, we reported some of the next improvements would be what you're actually sitting on, the stage, you notice we replaced the permanent wall behind you with this curtain, and we actually replaced, thank you, John, and we actually replaced the permanent dais with these modular tables, so what happens is after the meeting, and when someone wants to use the stage, we rolled the tables and chairs all behind the curtain, then the stage can be used for events, you also notice that the chairs everyone is sitting, are sitting on, are all new, we have 60 new chairs to go along with the 12 chairs that we salvaged, in case we needed overflow, but my understanding, they are memory foam chairs, so I was sitting on one testing it out during the meeting. Some of the other things, we are gonna, yeah, I think I did remember, one, some of the other things, we are replacing all the wooden tables with actually plastic resin tables, be easier to move around, and we did repair the roof in the kitchen, so there shouldn't leak next rain, some of the other things we're looking at is painting, oh yes, I forgot, thank you, Madam Clerk, we replaced the podium, so now it does not have to lean on the table to be secure, and we did get a new audiovisual table, so that I'm not there with the laptop wobbling around while I'm trying to turn on the PowerPoint, some things we're looking at doing, painting this facility, we still need to put in the ADA lift to make the stage accessible, and we will be cleaning the floor, perhaps even refinishing it, so these are things to be coming up in the next couple of months.
And you'll be upgrading the funeral home lighting?
Lighting, lighting is on the list.
What about, I think you might want to mention the pavilion roof?
Yes, the pavilion roof, that has been repaired, solar panels still need to be replaced, but the roof has been repaired, we'll see this weekend how well it holds up, we've had some different things going on in the pavilion, one is, you'll, I don't know if you heard, but a soccer ball hit the sprinklers, and that closed it for a little bit, we did replace a lot of the damaged light fixtures, we're looking to replace it with something a little more permanent, but for now, there'd be some limited lighting, just because we had to remove it all, so when it gets hit by a soccer ball, it wouldn't shatter to the ground like it's normally been happening.
So, how long were we shut down for the pavilion roof, I know we shut down for at least a few weeks, right?
That, that's correct, we were probably closed for three weeks or so, while we're getting the roof repaired, obviously it's based on weather, but for the sprinkler repair, we only shut down for one day.
Okay, and just a brief thing, when, when we do replace the lights in the pavilion and potentially here, I am part of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee, it'd be great if we did LED.
That's what we're looking at, the problem in the pavilion that we digressed is finding a light fixture that's LED, has a cage, and could stand a soccer ball hitting it without it breaking.
Okay, thank you.
So, for those at home, our programs did continue during the time that the roof was being repaired.
There were just two or three days that some things got canceled, but it's fine.
Okay, so I'm going to try again with another lead-in and ask if this is made of compostable plastic. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, so-
These things are small.
Okay, I'm talking about this apron thingy, okay, so, now we are going to move on to the first of our public hearings, so I would like to open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving a rate decrease schedule for Marin Sanitary Service for the provision of solid waste, garbage, and recycling services, and amending the agreement with MSS, Marin Sanitary Service, to substitute the free on-call household hazardous waste pickup program with a semi-annual curbside cleanup service and an on-call bulky item service, exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per 14 CCR, 1506, 1B3, as it can be shown with certainty that the action will know, will have no adverse significant effect on the environment. So, Garrett, could you please give us a staff report?
Sure, and what I'd like to do is, at some point, I'm going to turn this over to HF&amp;H, our consultants, who did the rate analysis, but before I do that, just like to add some introductory comments, some of the things, as background, you may recall, last July, council actually approved a 10.63% rate increase, effective in March of last year from MSS Services, prior to that, actually, the rates were originally, I think, last increase prior to that, back in January 2012, and that's when we actually had a new agreement in place. As you indicated, the service contract does indicate that there's a rate, MSS can request a rate review each year, this one's somewhat of anomaly, and that is actually a rate decrease, but HF&amp;H will kind of go through the rationale for how that came about, but one of the things we wanted to point out is that as staff, we work closely with the council members assigned to the Zero Waste Committee, and that's Mayor Goddard and Council Member Lacks, in addition to working with them on negotiations, we also contract with HF&amp;H, and they've been doing our rate review for the last couple of years, but prior, they also do the rate review for the franchisers group, and the franchisers group actually represents Sam Rafel, Larkspur, Ross, the County Marin, and the Los Gleanes Valley Sanitary District. But one of the things that we're also recommending, and the subcommittee and staff is recommending, that we substitute some of the existing service within the existing agreement with a new service, and so, what we're proposing is that we substitute the free on-call household hazardous waste, HHW, pickup program, with a semi-annual curbside cleanup service and on-call bulky item service. In essence, what those services are, is it allows people to put out more trash or compost recycling materials, up to two cubic yards, twice a year, I think two cubic yards is equivalent of like 14, 32-gallon garbage bags, and they'd be allowed to do two on-call pickups for free for bulky items, two bulky items such as couches and things like that, I'm sure MSS could provide a little more detail on how that works, they're also here available to answer questions. One of the things for the replacement is that the HHW program is rather costly and really hasn't been well-used by residents, I think last year their numbers were five households participated in the program, I mean, in essence, these two new programs that could be substituted, actually could be substituted at the same cost, so there wouldn't be any additional cost to residents, I think the subcommittee staff, as well as MSS, would indicate that we believe these new programs will be highly beneficial to the community. Now, in terms of substitution, the processes, we actually have to modify the services agreement, so the existing agreement has Exhibit A, which is called Description of Services, so what, that's attached to the staff report originally, was services that just substituted out HHW for the semi-annual bulky pickup, in your supplemental materials, you received a revised Exhibit A, revised Exhibit A actually provides additional clarification on the services provided by MSS, it just provides more clarity, there are no substantive changes, but it provides more clarity in actually the services provided, the committee and staff have reviewed it and believe it's, it is accurate in terms of the services provided, and again, one of the things to note is, this is a reduction, it, I think it's maybe a, perhaps a one-time thing, something to keep in mind in HF&amp;H, that we'll keep, we'll touch on this more, is that every few years, there's a, what we call a true-up, in this case, there's a credit for saving some fuel costs, some depreciation expenses, what that's done is it's reduced the cost for this year, but next year, the fuel costs will be reflective of what they actually are, so I would anticipate that there would be a rate increase, but that being said, compared to what the franchisers group, they just approved a 5.66% increase, we're proposing a decrease, I think overall, as HF&amp;H would point out, our rates are lower than the average for Marin, so it's all very much a good thing. So with that, the process since you've opened the public hearing, would be, I think, I would recommend that you consider the presentation from HF&amp;H, ask questions to staff in HF&amp;H, I'm sure the council subcommittee and Mayor Goddard and Council Member Lacks would like to share their thoughts on the recommendation, and then go ahead and accept public comment, and I know that the staff from MSS is also here to answer any questions, and that concludes the staff report.
Do you want a quick question, I, I didn't see it in here, but I'm sure it's in the fine print, the substitution, it sounds great, is that going to be for the, for the enormous amount of green waste, I'm thinking of the 7,000 broom plants that are awaiting a swift and timely death in my backyard, now, do I have the opportunity to hack them all down, schlep them up to the front of the house anytime I want, or are these going to be set day, these are going to be set day-
They're scheduled days.
Around that week or so?
Or you could schlep it yourself.
Absolutely, we'll schlep it ourselves.
But, but having said that, David, correct me if I'm wrong, you can bring that little by little each week.
Yes.
So, you don't have to wait, you'll have more by that time, when the scheduled dates are.
You should stop by.
Okay, just saying, just saying, if it's all sitting around, you still can bring up, up to five 32-gallon-
Yeah, it's easier to do fog cans a week.
You should come visit.
I've got my own stuff to deal with.
Okay, but you got that?
Got it, thanks.
Okay, alrighty, so, let's go ahead and, and hear from HF&amp;H, and go from there.
I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce HF&amp;H.
Oh, yes, you should do that.
We have Marva Sheehan and Scott Holt.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, my name is Scott Holt, and I've been with HF&amp;H here for the last two years, and this is actually my third review, thank you for having us to show you our findings this year. Prior to being with HF&amp;H, I worked in the private industry with Allied Waste and Republic Services for the last 17 years, prior to coming onboard here. This evening, I'm, we're going to be going over our rate review process, we'll look at our findings, and then finish up with a summary of how your rates compare to others in the area. As Garrett touched on, we do a detailed review every third year, that happened to be this year, this is per-year Exhibit B in your franchise agreement, and I believe that was an attachment in your agenda packet, it's a detailed review of, of all the costs of MSS, and we go through, set the rates for, based on reasonable necessary costs for them to conduct their business in an efficient manner. The subsequent years, and the interim years, we do what's called a modified index review, and that's where most of the costs change by a very, by various indices, while certain other costs that are more uncontrollable in nature are trued up on an annual basis, and you see those there, disposal fuel depreciation. We're hired by you as an independent consultant, we work strictly for public agencies, and we, we are, I'm sorry, we are completely, we present our findings regardless of how, of the direction of any adjustment that comes along, we tend to, we are, take a minute here, Marva-
So you do those independently, right?
Yes, we do those independently, I get stuck on certain words sometimes. Our staff is Marva Sheehan, she's our engagement director, she is also a partner with HF&amp;H, and a CPA, and she has worked on the Marin sanitary rate applications for many years now, and myself. As, as we've gone, established Marin sanitary, they've requested a 4.27% rate decrease, when we went through and looked at the books and records according to the rate methodology, we actually came up with a 2.77% recommended increase, decrease. Probably one of the bigger questions on everybody's mind is why is there a decrease, and I know Garrett's touched on this, the two biggest primary reasons for this is, is a change in fuel prices, as we've all seen, fuel, when we did the rates last year, fuel was kind of more up here, and as we've all seen, the fuel prices have been dropping the last, the last year, so you're getting a benefit in your 2016 rates due to that adjustment. Also, some of the assets that are used in, in the town of Fairfax, and some residential carts, vehicles, those will be fully depreciated by the end of 2016, so you're seeing a favorable rate adjustment there as well. Keep in mind, some of these, the fuel, we don't know what it's going to do, it could continue to go down, it probably more likely will go up a little bit, however, we don't know, so next year, it's, it's a little bit of an uncertainty, and additionally, you're, right now, you're getting the benefit of depreciate, of fully depreciated assets, but at some time, they will need to replace those assets, so there will be a cost there at some point in the future. The adjustments that we've proposed, and, and, we have these in more detail in our report, the big one that stands out there is, is your revenue, and that's due primarily to when MSS commit, turned in their application, they had only a certain amount of time that they were able to project their costs based on, whereas by the time we went through and did the, our review, we were able to do it on a more recent period of time and project a more accurate figure, we believe. Here's the makeup of what the 2.77% decrease by component categories, we've discussed the fuel and oil, those are the, are the fuel and depreciation, those are the two major contributors to the decrease, on the other hand, you see disposal there, that's one of the big contributors to an increase, that offsets the, the fuel and depreciation, what you're seeing there is, is a little bit of the reverse, we had, last year, we had a big adjustment on disposal that you're not seeing again this year, I believe that was about $26,000 that you're not seeing. Looking at, looking at this slide, how do, how the rates compare, as you can stay, as you can see with the decrease, they compare, they compare very well, you're lower than the county average, and then also some of the other local cities there. And again, this one shows, you're 11.2% lower on residential, 32-gallon carts, 8.3% lower on commercial. And if you have any questions?
Yeah, I got questions, it seems, first of all, what a, a surprising week, first I go to the post office, and the postmaster tells me that there's going to be a decrease in the price of stamps, I've only been here for 58 years, but I didn't think that was going to happen, and now I sit here and I, and I understand that a semi-regulated utility is actually going to, is proposing to, to give us a rate decrease. The thing that stuns me is, do we, why, I mean, half of, I don't know if it's half, but there are two components here, one is this depreciation, and one of its, one of them is very volatile, in the last year and change, we've gone from, what, 140 bucks a barrel, to under 30 bucks, so it can go up, it can go down, there are probably shakes in, in the Middle East who have no idea what's going on, so why would we bring this conversation forward, why not let Marin Sanitary Service reap a small benefit on the basis of this, put the money, as we know they do, toward good recycling programs, and call ourselves lucky, and not have to drag you out in the middle of the night to tell us why I'm wrong?
Right, that's a very good question, I think, actually Garrett might want to answer that one.
So, I, I think how it comes down to, it's kind of a policy position, and actually, we debated this quite a lot, exactly for the same reason, well, things are fluctuating, when you look at it, it's a doll, less than a dollar a month saving per resident, should we somehow bank it, reserve it, so next year, rates, if they're going to go up, wouldn't go up as much, but, two things, one is, there's a methodology, and we do need to follow the methodology, and what happens is, if you don't do it this one year, let's say MSS didn't request it, then next year, it's all this follow-up and true-up, and then you're going to get even more confusing, so what we decided, the subcommittee, and they could probably chime in on this better than I can, is that we decided that it would perhaps be less confusing to handle on a year-to-year basis, where we're saying, this is exactly what it is for the year, there's no surplus, there's no, there's no deficit, it's exactly what it's supposed to be, next year, we'll do the same thing, assuming there's a rate increase, or a rate request, and then we could see each year, we're doing it, each year is held independent, and we don't get into the issues of trying to track reserves, trying to make sure we're allocating it properly, and I believe that was our rationale, but the mayor or Councilman Lacks can probably chime in, if it sounds like you-
I just want to add one thing, just, one of the things that happened too, is the federal rate on the per-mileage cost went down. went down. It used to be 57 and a half cents. I'm a consultant, so it went down to 54 cents. And I would also say, I'm sure, you know, I get worried about gifts of public funds. So I think, my personal opinion is, we're doing the right thing, and we're saying less than what they asked for, which would mean we'd have to true-up sooner next year. But I would just say that there are things changing. So if you bill your mileage rate, last year, you were billing at 57 and a half cents a mile, now it's 54.
In 16. So every year, we're going to come back, we're going to do this?
Well, it's dependent on if MSS submits for a rate schedule adjustment. If they don't, then we don't do the analysis.
So why did you ask for a rate schedule adjustment? Just maybe you can answer. Why did they?
It's a true-up year.
It's a true year. Ah, that's a difference. Okay. It's a special year. It's.
Right. It is a base year this year.
Right. It's part, Marva Sheehan with HFNH, it is part of your contract has a rate-setting methodology, and in that, they are required to submit an application every year. And this detailed year, it happened to have a negative amount. But they are, that's part of your agreement, is that they're to submit. Now, they could submit an application that says zero, and you could decide what you wanted to do with it. But they are required to submit some type of an application to you on an annual basis.
Let me speculate. Next year, we're sitting here, 50 bucks a barrel. Are we hiring you to come forward and rejigger these numbers and everything?
That is obviously, that's the challenge that you have when they're submitting the application, is to look at, you know, their process, to make sure it's done in accordance with your agreement. And like Scott said, my role is to make sure, there's, if you look at the rate-setting methodology, it's half a dozen pages. Our role is to look at making sure that they're doing it in compliance with that agreement. And, you know, the door, as Scott was saying, if we find adjustments in favor of the company, that's what they are. If they're in favor of, you know, the rate payer's part, that's what they are. That's our role as an independent consultant, come in to look at it. It's up to the town or to you, if you want to engage somebody to make that review or not.
I have a question about, I know that the two pieces were depreciation and the costs of fuel, but I noticed in the MSS annual report, one of the efficiencies that you've added, at least for commercial, is use of tablets. And I think what I saw is that you're going to add that to the residential. And so I imagine that potentially, after everybody learns this, that's going to really increase your efficiency and cost effectiveness. And I don't know if that's anything Patty or Kim or Joe want to speak to, just to see where you, because I think that's great, you know, not dealing with all that paper. You probably increase the speed in which drivers can get to the pickups. Is that something you want to speak to, Patty? When it's your turn?
Do you want to?
I just wanted to ask a question about the efficiency and where we see it going, but maybe I should wait.
Okay. Well, let's just, let's finish with everything that you guys are here to present. Do we have any more specific questions about?
I just want to weigh in a little bit and echo some of Garrett's comments. And David, we did, I especially thought, well, you know, we're getting this sort of a windfall because of the drop in oil prices, which nobody could have thought of. And I thought, well, you know, we're looking at probably some increases next year because of the depreciation is going to change. And, you know, fuel prices are likely to go up. But it just proved too impractical to find a way to do that consistent with the methodology. And one thing that I appreciate in going through this process is that, in a sense, we sort of roll with MSS as their prices go up, you know, our rates necessarily go up. But that's, I think that's a fair way to allocate the cost of service, and it is a very transparent process. And I'm also very grateful for HFNH and your work, Scott and Marva, for helping us to interpret this, because it is a lot of technical, financial data. But essentially, it is given a lot of scrutiny, and MSS does, I think, does a good job of doing things efficiently. And, you know, there's going to be some points where, you know, there's going to be points of disagreement about how the methodology should be calculated out. Fortunately, this year, it was, we had this windfall. It was a very, very easy process. If there's a precipitous increase in fuel prices, which could happen overnight, that will obviously change the rates. So we have a little bit of a windfall and the anomaly of the rates going down for a little bit, but, you know, we just have to look at it year by year.
So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And you're going to stay around while we have this conversation? Okay. And Patty, do you want to come up and address what Barbara was asking about, the tablets?
For this opportunity, I'd like to introduce to you the colleagues I have with me here this evening, Ron Piambo, our general manager. And if I could, Ron, how old are you? He has a birthday coming up.
How old?
Okay, then I'm going to make it up.
How old?
Yes.
Sixty-five.
Okay. Ron is a 65-year resident of Fairfax.
All right.
Yeah. Kim Schei, third generation, yeah. Kim Scheibley is our Director of Compliance and Customer Relations, and Joe Garberino, our hero. Do you want to disclose your age, or no? Okay. So I would like to thank Garrett and all of you for this consideration. I realize it may seem a little bit upside down, but it furthers, as you had mentioned, David, we are a regulated monopoly, and it furthers our mission to be completely transparent. So we're very happy to be here tonight. I would also like to mention that when you compare our rates overall, our average annual rate increase between 1998 and 2016, before we started here with you all, without the new programs that have been requested, getting us to zero waste, our average increase is actually 3.41 percent. The average CPI, if you take into consideration all urban consumers, wage earners, wages, employment cost index, benefits, fuel index, and weighted average, was 3.46 percent. So we're just below that average. To address our attempts to become ever more efficient, we continue to be proud of this fact that we're making room for new programs with those efficiencies while maintaining the current lower-than-average rate, while constantly working to be as effective and efficient as possible. Toward that end, overall, in our service area, we've been able to eliminate four routes with the kind of technology that you had mentioned, Barbara. Additionally, three helper positions have been eliminated, and one route completely eliminated due to automization. I think that's a word. Employee hours reduced to 293 weekly hours overall. This particular reduction helped us increase weekly diversion hours by 134. Seventy percent of our trucks do use that onboard communication, the tablets now, and that has been very helpful with full implementation here in the commercial area. We've also invested in RouteSmart, which is a fascinating technology well beyond my pay grade, but it helps us to make the routes as efficient as possible. You've heard that UPS only does right-hand turns, similar sort of technology. And if you've got any questions about either, Ron is here to answer those questions. Further organics diversion, as you know, AB 1826 is a mandatory commercial organics diversion legislation that went into place January 1st, and we're ready for it. What we've essentially done is, what that legislation and others have done is, make sure that there will be no organics going to the landfill, as we talked about in our LTF meeting this morning, within the next four years or so. So depending upon the scientist you talk to, greenhouse gas production contributes to 14, 19 percent of greenhouse gas production overall. So we're looking to develop dry AD programs in addition to the wet AD program and aerobic digestion that we have in the partnership with CMSA, and have actually followed a colleague to northern Italy. And I know this is probably hard to understand and believe, but we were able to see five functioning AD facilities in northern Italy where they were able to get energy and also compost the material, all done as in benefit of public-private partnerships, but because Italy's been living with 10-year organics bans at the landfill for 10 years. Food Waste to Energy now has 142 commercial customers diverting 40 tons of food waste from the landfill via CMSA, and CMSA is now off the grid on some days with our, your fuel. Commercial composting services are also available for those who compost green waste. We found great success in our quarterly residential hands-on organic diversion training workshops. And 200 customers participated in our customer appreciation day and got free tours, free compost, and a little cart. Speaking of organics, our composting is done in Nevada now, not at Samora, further lowering our carbon footprint. They finally got their permit, and we're very happy, finally, I'm almost done, that we're adding the two new curbside programs. And unfortunately, five people just wasn't what needed to perpetuate a program that you all were paying for in household hazardous waste collection. Kim is happy to answer any questions about those programs, and Joe is here. I know some of you had questions about markets and what could we do specifically about plastics. So do you want to talk about that then, Dad?
Thank you, Patty, and welcome, Joe. Thank you for coming tonight.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it's a privilege to be here to talk to you. Over the years, I've been serving as an owner since 1956 here in Marin, and over the last 20 years, I've been more focused on the recycling rather than the collection. And Patty and that staff are doing a fabulous job, and we've done a great job with recycling. We're second to nobody. We reach as high as what we collect, recycling 75 percent of what we got our hands on. But we have a severe problem now with recycling. I'm sure you've probably read newspaper articles, magazines, something came out of the New York Times saying that recycling is over, it's going to end, but it's really not going to end. We can't let that end. And our recycling tons are going down. We collect the same amount. The problem is what people put in doesn't weigh as much as it used to weigh. The newspapers, for instance, that you read, most people are reading it online, and quite a few people. I collect three dailies a day. All three together don't weigh what the Chronicle used to weigh 10 or 15 years ago. I'm sure you've noticed that, too. So that's what's happening on the weight. So we don't have that weight anymore. We're servicing more customers than ever. We're adding all the apartment houses, put cans, whatever we have to do, we're doing it, and people are doing it. You give them the method to do it, and they're happy to do it, whether they live in an apartment or a house or a commercial place. What's happening here now is that they're printing less paper, and the paper that they're collecting isn't as heavy as it used to be, because what we used to collect, the heaviest part that we collected was newsprint. And that newsprint was the cornerstone of what you had. You would fill two trailer loads a day, and now we're filling one every two days. So that's how bad that is, and it's a serious thing. And what that means for curbside recycling is that our costs are increasing, and will continue to increase. There's no way around this. I see that it's going to happen for the next couple of years. I've seen the ups, I've seen the downs around that downside now, and there's a lot of reasons for it. One of the biggest problems is the falling oil prices. That's really, was really hurting us, because they make plastic from oil. And when we were shipping recycling, people were doing it here in the United States, we saw it in Oregon, they'd get that, they'd melt that down, and instead of using oil, they were using recycled plastics. And most of this, we were shipping it all to China. And now, since that time, now China's put up the green fence. They put it up three years ago. So when they ordered paper, they wanted clean paper, no contaminants. If you brought plastic, the same thing. And people were used to shipping some stuff and being sloppy about it, and then they had to clean it over there. Now, they'll tell you when it gets there, do you want to take it back and pay the freight back? Or you can leave it here, we're not going to pay you anything. And that's happening, and they're absolutely right on that. If you order bananas, you want to truckload a banana, it's not a bunch of cantaloupes, because you can't use that. And I can't blame them for what they're doing there. But what's happened now, the newspapers were always the backbone of our recycling. That was it, that and glass. And I see that drink that you're drinking there, Barbara, they're coming out with plastic now in that bottle, and they're doing more and more glass.
I won't buy the plastic, though. I won't buy the plastic, because it does come in plastic. I only buy the glass.
Yeah.
And it weighs a lot.
I know it doesn't weigh a lot, as it used to weigh.
Oh, really?
No, it really doesn't, Barbara, believe me what I'm telling you. And so anyway, it's declining, and what we need to do is to let people know that the glass that you have today weighs 30 percent less than it used to weigh. And so the plastic bottles are the same thing. Newspapers were 80 percent of what we used to do, and today, they're down to 40 percent of what we used to do and less. And that's critical in weight for us, because we made the money for that. And of course, all these prices have come down these last three years, whether it was paper, cardboard, mixed waste paper, plastics, metals, copper, all that, it's really as low as it's ever been. Pet bottles, for instance, you know, when you weigh them, half of what they did 20 years ago weighed about .66 per ounce. Now, that same pet bottle that you see is .02, .12 ounces per bottle. But what that means to, in our mind, you know, when you get 70,000 bottles to make a ton, then, now it's 35,000 to make a ton. And that's a big, big difference, and it costs us twice as much to do that than it is in the first place. And in addition to that, the market's on the floor. So paper is decreasing in our bins, and our plastic is increasing. So it has to be a stop to that, and that's what we're trying to work on through the state level and federal levels. All of us in the industry are approaching the people that represent us to try to do something about this here. There's more light material like plastic in our bins and less materials such as glass and newspapers. So even glass weighs 40 percent less. Tin cans are lighter, aluminum cans are lighter, and so is the plastic lighter. All of these materials crept up on us, we're not realizing it. We wonder, what are we doing? Our weights are down, and you know, was there something wrong? So we checked everything, all this stuff, and there was something wrong, and we realized what that something wrong was all about. So anyway, we're working on this. The diversion is a measure by the weight diverted, divided by the weight that we generated, and the diversion rate started going down. That's how we figured all this out. Took us a while. Prices on all recycled products have gone down, way down considerably, and now we're even paying to take plastics three, four, five, six, and seven. We've got to pay them $1,000 a load, which is 24 tons, to get it over to China. I have now more than enough plastic to fill this room, three times of plastic bottles that I'll have to pay $1,000, and it may go up. I don't think it's going to come down anytime soon.
Wait, Mr. Garberino, that was the point. I sent an email earlier today to Patty. And so let me ask you for your experience. Since we're in an odd economic cycle here on three through seven, isn't the message here, folks, think about putting your products or purchasing products or using your purchasing power, not to put, go to the checkout counter with plastic products that are labeled three through seven?
Well, that's what you'd like to see happen, but reality is that it doesn't happen. And if it doesn't happen, we have to go beyond that, because we, the industry, we've done our job. We were mandated to recycle a percentage by the year 1995, 25 percent. Then the next mandate, by 2000, you had to get to 50. We were beyond 50 then, and we got to 75. But the problem is now, we've done our job, and we've done it well with you, the people, backing us up to do that. What needs to be done is the mandate to the people that made that product to take it back or quit making it. That's the bottom line. You've mandated us. You've mandated us, we, the people, we're all together on this. Now you've got to mandate those people that made that product that we can't recycle and quit fishing, filling the oceans out there. And litter every place, and it's mostly all plastic. I had a city manager and a town manager visit us for the first time, they knew at their job. And I always bring them up to the transfer station, and it's like a football field of trash. And it's over 50% plastic of every kind, more and more of it. When you go into the grocery store, that's all you see. Every item today is not packaged in paper or cardboard, it's all different kinds of light plastic. And it takes a lot of light plastic the size of this room to make a ton, if that. So these are our problems, and I just want the opportunity to tell you all this, because I'll be speaking to all our jurisdictions about this, and I'll be speaking nationally on this at our Waste Management Conference that's coming up in Las Vegas. But this is worldwide, it's not Marin, it's not California, it's all over now. And Canada has the same problem, Europe's the same thing. They've got the same garbage that we do, same thing. You make plastic here, they make more plastic over there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Now, I know it won't help with selling products, but is it possible, as you're making these presentations, to talk about cubic feet of materials versus necessarily just weight? Because, you know, when we look at our reports, it looks like there's less being diverted, which isn't true. It's, so I'm wondering if there's any possibility of trying to push for state legislation to look at cubic feet of materials as well?
Well, we're diverting it, but it's lighter.
Right. So if you look at cubic feet versus weight, would that help?
Well, the volume is creeping up on us, not the weight. But the weight is leaving us, because the heaviest stuff that we used to collect is not there. And you can imagine, even the glass is lighter.
So what I'm suggesting, as you're lobbying for a change,
Yes.
is to move away from looking at weight, but instead, the measurement of diversion would be in cubic feet.
Yes.
So that might be a way, and even if, you know, we don't get that, I know that's, I'm not asking you guys necessarily, but it would be kind of nice to show that, because we could see that, you know, we're still getting rid of
Oh, yeah.
huge waste diversion. It's just, it's not meeting the weight requirement, but its cubic feet is increasing, from what I'm hearing you say. So that's just something to think about for the future.
Yeah, it's going to be a hard decision for all of us to make, but when you look at the plastic, like I showed them today, bales of it, and think about, for instance, a football field. I will fill a football field before the end of the year in bales. Imagine baling that, even if I have to pay $1,000 a load. I think when you stop and consider, we're all going to have to do that, rather than dump it.
No, there's the other way, which we've been touching upon, so I just want to hammer down on this. If we don't use it in the first place, then we don't have to worry about where we put it. So what I'd really love to know is, in your dream of dreams, I want you to tell me, David, don't buy that stuff anymore. Don't buy 3 through 7 plastics. Got anything else you don't want me to buy?
Well, if I had the authority to order that, then I would. But I don't.
But you can make a recommendation to the community on that.
So, Mr. Garberino?
I would actually interject. You know, what we can do downstream is limited by what is being dumped upstream.
That's right.
And I think you're doing an admirable job, you know, fighting the tide, which is coming from upstream. And the upstream source is really manufacturers pushing off, externalizing the cost, because it's cheaper to package your peanut butter in plastic
Yes.
and damn the consequences for trying to deal with it later, damn the consequences of all the plastic in the ocean.
But Peter, if we refuse to buy the product that comes in the packaging that we don't like...
Except, when you go to the supermarket, you have fewer and fewer choices to be able to buy glass. Ultimately, I think we do need some kind of legislation to require manufacturers to use more glass and so forth, because there are many, many products you just can't get in glass. And, you know, that's a bigger political, economic issue.
But I also would like to ask Patty to speak to this a little bit, because she does an incredible amount of work with Extended Producer Responsibility and looking at this top-down and where all of this is coming from upstream. And also, just to call out, since we are looking at our contract and our rates, is that a lot of what we do spend our money on is the incredible outreach and education that Marin Sanitary is providing at this point, with five outreach staff. And the amount of education telling you not to buy it because why and what to buy instead is being done fabulously and is called out in this report. But I would love to hear a little bit more from Patty about that.
Okay, so here's the other radical speaking. Dad's too shy to mention, he also had his own campaign. The, remember the castle on non-recyclable plastic that you built without benefit of a building permit? That gave me a little angst when I was on the planning commission, but what happened to it?
I'm so good at plastic that they had my picture at the Plastics Institute in Washington, DC. I gave a talk to a bunch of little old ladies who really were into what we're talking about. And at the end, I told them how bad this plastic bag was and all that. "Mr. Garberino, what can you do to help?" Well, I didn't know what to tell them then. Then, well, I says, "Well, you know what? Get all your plastic bags and put them in a box and ship them to the Plastics Institute in Washington, DC." And I let it go at that. Then three weeks later, they called me up, "Mr. Garberino, we shipped 44 boxes to Washington, DC." A year later, we're invited to speak at Dominican College on the same subject, and a person insisted on introducing us. See, I says, "You know, I hope it's a good introduction, because, you know, we're all nice people here." And he said, "No, no, no." Says, "I was on the Plastics Institute floor when your packages came in." He made my whole decade. So if we all did that, shipped them to the Plastics Institute, let them pile out over there, let them think about that plastic. But they're ruling the world now. It's the oil industry and also the Plastics Institute. And those are the people that are doing this, and nobody's getting to them yet. So, but we're working at it, we're trying, and we'll do it, we'll overcome. But the question is, we still have problems today, and we'll, together, we'll do this and work it out. We've got the program, we're doing it, the people are happy we've done it. Now we're in this doldrums here of plastics, and we've got to see what we can do. Five nations, including China, Indonesia, Malaysia, they get their stuff and throw it right in the ocean. Don't recycle, just throw it. And that's 50% of that gyro, that's as big as Texas floating out there in their ocean. The captain that discovered that is a friend of mine. I've got his picture on a raft on top of it, you could walk over that plastic, how much plastic is out there. So it's really serious. The making of plastic is a serious thing, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be making that much plastic. Thank you for your...
Thank you so very much.
If I could even attempt to add just a couple of pitches. EPR is what it's all about, Peter, Extended Producer Responsibility. And we are, as a community, working to support those efforts at the state and the national level. So that's where we're going to get to that. And you know where that started? In Fairfax, with the ban on polystyrene. And all, when we tried to do it on a county level, this was when Gloria was still alive, now 20 years ago, all, what I called, pardon me, anybody wearing a suit. All the suits would come out from the Plastics Institute in Omaha every single month and threaten us with a lawsuit. And sure enough, Fairfax didn't care about the lawsuit. They had the courage to go forward. And you guys started it. And about six months later, my family lives in a little fishing village, I was able to get on the train and get a little Herald Tribune, and there was Fairfax on the front of the newspaper, and I still have it, getting the poly, because they didn't have polystyrene, they don't have peanuts. But you guys were leading the world in that. And there you have it. So that's my last pitch. We do have a new controller, and he's working, Barbara, on a volumetric conversion, because the landfill fills up by volume, not by weight. So we're right on that with you. Thanks.
One last thing about that castle she was talking about. Over 20 years ago, there was an ad in the paper, "Bring all your plastic bags to Lucky Stores, we recycle them." I go around speaking, low rotary lines, go tell them, "We can't recycle this plastic, nobody can." So I got on my Red Dijay, I couldn't believe it, it's too late, I'm beat, and I could hardly sleep that night. But I had 54 bales left over that I was shipping to the Philippines, and they quit, they wouldn't take it anymore. So I got a big bale, 1,800 pounds, put it in the back of a truck at 4:00 in the afternoon, went over to Terlinda, and with two other big gorillas, we were just about to dump, and the manager runs out, "What are you doing here?" I says, "I saw your ad in the paper, you want some bags? I thought I'd help you out." Drop that off here, I'm going to call the cops. I says, "Do me a favor, buddy. If you don't stand back when this thing hits the floor, it's going to break both of your legs." So anyway, the cops came, the sergeant, he picks up my mail, he's a stamp collector, says, "Joe, what's the problem?" I says, "Sergeant, I saw this ad, I thought I'd help the guy out." So anyway, it ended up, they didn't arrest me, he got the plastic, but there was never ever another ad in the newspapers, "They bring your plastic bags to Lucky Stores." Then I told him how lucky he was, because I collect military vehicles. Had I've had an airplane, you bugger, I'd have dropped it on you. Then with the other bales, I built a castle, all plastic. And we go into the dump and pick out all these plastic items and hang them all over the place. And then what happened? Two weeks later, the set fire to it, the flames, our building's 100 feet, the flames are 100 feet over.
Arson burn.
We had to pull those everything out, we opened, so the whole building went burning. So I've been fighting the plastics.
Yeah. And the sign on the front said, "Castle of Nonrecyclable Plastic." And then an arson burned it two weeks. It was actually a bit longer, but bad. But keep on fighting.
Patty, can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Because we don't get you all that often to come here and bring in the team. And this might be a Kim question. Since earlier tonight on the consent calendar, as you know, we received your quarterly report, extraordinary collection of graphs and documentation of what's going on. So I've been talking to people since I read it last week and over the weekend and the last couple of days, and trying to figure out how many people are participating in your compost program, because I noticed some of the diversion rates were interesting. And I couldn't find one person who understood them.
Understood what?
How to compost properly.
Oh, how to, okay.
Just, and you send stuff out all the time. I read it, it couldn't have, couldn't be more clear to me. But I was surprised that all of these people, apparently fairly smart to me, couldn't figure out exactly what does and doesn't go in the green can. What do you mean? I shouldn't throw the pizza boxes in the thing, I should throw it in the green, you know? And I'm looking at these people going, "I don't know what to do with the milk carton." And I was saying to myself, knowing that I would see you this evening and see Kim this evening, that I don't know how you outreach to correct that problem. But this is a fairly smart community. And to get 100% of the people not getting what they should be doing with this, with our compost, suggests that there's some drilling down on the outreach.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but our set-out rates for the green waste cart is about at 80, 85%. So the green waste, they're actually putting the cart out, so that's all good. In some cases, and we've actually done some surveys and audits of the routes, we, that's how we know the 80, 85%, which is all good. We had a small percentage, I think 12, that were put out empty. So we figured it was the teenager's role to put that out every weekend or whenever it's supposed to go out. And it's out. But the other thing that we did was check to see how many people participated in the food waste portion, to put the food waste in the green cart. And that was only about 58%. And that is actually more than double the statewide average. And one of the biggest problems is the ick factor. People can't seem to get over the ick factor. It was okay to put it in one cart, but they can't put it in another. Do you have a sense, David, as to what their best way of communication was to absorb information so we could reach out to that?
As extraordinarily time-consuming as this would be, I don't know that you can't do it without doing, like, running a retail politics council-like election, in which you've got to walk around and you've got to explain it to these people. Because they should be smart enough to figure out what I think is very clear stuff, but they're not figuring it out. They're, a number of these people said, "It was too frustrating for me, I wouldn't do it." And there were some people with the ick factor, to which I just have no time, you know, for that. But it's, you know, because there were bio-bags and other things. But it would be way over my pay grade to figure out...
I have a suggestion. I think some of the carts have labels on them, and we started this in Canyon Village, where I live. I worked with Jennifer on that and Kim. And there were people initially who were going, "This is gross, you know, we're going to have rats." And I said, "Well, it's in your garbage can." And people love it. People who said, "I'm not going to do that, I don't have time, I'm an old lady, so am I." I see those same people out there putting stuff in there. So I think most of the cans have some sort of label on them that has a cross mark. And I suspect that my neighbors, who have, many have come up to me and said, "Thank you for pushing that, we love it." And we don't have yard waste, really, so it's mostly, it's mostly food waste.
So you explained it to them?
I did not. It was basically the label. I went to a homeowners' association meeting and pushed it with them. And once it was agreed to, people sort of figured it out. And there's labels on there, and it's mostly food waste, because we have very little yard waste, living in townhouses.
Can I just point out behind our friends from HF&amp;H? So those are new indoor recycling systems. And the signage behind each one of those is signage that exists everywhere and was handed out and sent out in a billing cycle at one point, in stickers that were to go on every single green cart. When originally the green waste program came out, you guys actually delivered them with the stickers on them. There, I can go on and on and on, with the number of places where people have had the opportunity to learn these things. Sustainable Fairfax is at every event. All of our events are zero waste with information tables everywhere. And there are websites, the town website has information on it. There is so much information out there, and these guys work 24/7 on doing this outreach. The issue is, do people care? And as soon as someone cares enough to ask, they know it forever. The issue is, how do you wake these people up to understand that the problem actually has great, much greater repercussions than, you know, than the, how easy it would be just to put this in the right spot at disposal? So that is the million-dollar question, and I'm going to let them speak, especially Kim, to talk as our outreach guru.
Kim's going to highlight our program for Earth Day, which ramped up quite a bit each year, the number of participants, because people come down, they get a freebie, they get the compost, they also get a tour and all the reasons why exactly, Renee, that you're mentioning. And then list the number of ways and outreach and points that we touch people with that message.
So what we've been, we, I spoke to you before about focus groups that we've done. We've been gathering a lot of information from people, asking, "Okay, what the heck? We send you all this stuff. How do we get you to actually do it?" And actually, they said, "Talk to me. Don't mail me stuff." That's helpful, but it's the conversation that really, really gets it to where they really understand it and do it correctly. So we've been doing a lot more workshops. We've also just went through an extensive redesign of all of our messaging on all of our carts. So all of the new carts that have ordered, have been ordered, have all the graphic labels, they're clearly embossed with what goes in the, that it's an organics cart for food waste, yard scrap, or food scraps and yard waste. And then we are also doing a lot of face-to-face messaging with homeowners associations, neighborhood associations, face-based communities, PTAs, and anybody, basically, who will invite us in and listen to us, will come talk, will bring kitchen pails. But our big thing coming up is our Customer Appreciation Day, which was really successful last year. It was our very first one, it was huge, it was phenomenal. We're going to have another one April 24th. And during that time, customers can take tours of the recycling center, or actually all the facilities. So they actually get to see what it means to have a, why we have that split cart, and what really goes in each side. And what happens to your material if you don't put it in the recycling where it, if it is actually recyclable where it should go, or into the organics cart if it's compostable. But if you put it into that landfill, what happens to it? A lot of people under the misconception that we sort it. We don't. It goes into the transfer station, where it gets loaded into a giant truck and taken to the landfill where it lives forever. So they get to see that, and they get to have that connection then. They also get hands-on demonstrations of how to prep food and how to collect the food scrap in the kitchen pail, or actually, we advocate for using something else that you have, reusing it, collecting your food scraps internally, every meal, every day, every week. Every week it goes to the curb, and we collect it. And then we have, of And then we have, of course, all of our print material that's available, and our online, we're beefing up our website, we're getting the message out more with social media, Facebook, we now have Twitter, don't ask me what that means.
Kim, one suggestion, like, one of the things you could do is do a few YouTube videos.
Oh, yes, so we...
And just have those, not that, you know, people who don't go to Customer Appreciation Day could actually see that.
Thank you, Barbara, for mentioning that, because that is, we have a list of short little videos that we've been making, like, how to properly set your carts out, how to collect your kitchen scraps in your kitchen, how to set up your house so that everything that is recyclable actually goes into the recycling instead of into a garbage can, because that's all you have in your bathroom, for instance, or your laundry room.
Yeah, I have some. Now that we talked about my age, I've also been with the company for 47 years, and this is, the organics collection is no different than when we first started the curbside recycling. Joe and I got all the equipment together, we got the trucks and got everybody excited about it, and it got started. And it peaked and then started to fade off again. And then we started thinking that we have to teach the children, so the environmental classroom kicked in way before it was popular and something that was mandated to do. And the kids would go home and tell the parents, "You can't do that, Mom and Dad, you gotta put it here and everything." So it takes time and it'll come around, and the organics is the same thing, it will, it will come around, we're all set. We have a lot of discussions about it, that we now need to get the tonnage into those carts away from the landfill carts. So it'll, it'll come around, it just takes a little bit of time.
So I wanted to say, did you guys have any other specific questions? Because I could talk about waste all night.
I have one question, it's on bulky waste.
Please.
May I ask that?
Yes.
First of all, I want to thank you for adding the bulky waste, I've been wanting this for a long time. And I just have a suggestion, I think one of the reasons why the hazardous waste program didn't work so well is a lot of people didn't know about it, they may have gotten a mailer at one point. And I know a friend of mine, I, she had some stuff, and I had to explain to her about the program, and I looked on your website, and on the website, it wasn't showing that there was a free day for Fairfax residents, and I realized that creates competition and all that. But I suggest to you that for this bulky waste, two item, twice-a-year deal, that you have something on your website that it's part of the contract for Fairfax so that people know, because that's one of the things that makes me crazy, when I see a couch sitting out with a free sign on it. And classically, what I do is I put it on Craigslist, just so that somebody will pick it up. Even if it's not mine, it's never mine. But it just, it's so terrible, and then when it rains, it gets worse, and it's heavier. So thank you for doing that. So if you could do something like that on your website, it'd be great.
Yes, and the actual Fairfax curbside hazardous waste collection is advertised on the website, but it's the HHW website, Marin HHW, go to the Pilot Curbside Program drop-down menu, and for the next, until June 30th, you'll see Fairfax's collection. We had to put it there because it is HHW, it is not a Marin sanitary service commodity. However, now that all of our service areas will have these programs, I can actually advertise on the website when the collection days, the scheduled collection days will, will be, I can advertise what the bulky item on-call program is, and it will be the same for everybody. So there will be no confusion, "Oh, you're here, yours is a little different, you're there, actually, you don't get a day." It'll be much easier and, and much better for our customers all around.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we go out to the public part of this public hearing? Okay. Any questions, comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a rate schedule for Marin sanitary service, MSS, for the provision of solid waste, garbage, and recycling services, and authorizing the mayor to sign the amendment to the agreement with MSS.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a... Motion Kohler and Second Lacks, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and none opposed. So motion passes. Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Okay, thank you.
So, welcome back, everybody. We're moving on to our second public hearing item. And I would like to open this public hearing with an introduction and first reading by title only of an ordinance amending Chapter 12.44, which is "Street Trees and Shrubs" of the Town Code exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per 14 CCR 15061B3, as it can be shown with certainty that the action will have no adverse significant effect on the environment. And let's go ahead with the staff report. Garrett, please.
So, really, this amendment's just all about, is being proposed to provide more clarity regarding the liability of property owners related to properties that abut the sidewalks and landscape areas. So, under existing town code, property owners are responsible for maintaining the landscaping and sidewalks fronting their properties regardless if the town initially installed the sidewalk and/or the landscaping improvements. The town's only required to maintain the sidewalk if it can be demonstrated that we both installed the sidewalk and both maintained and installed landscaping. And so, what we're trying to do is just provide a little more consistency and clarity related to this section because it's a little confusing. But specifically, what the change is, it's the language basically that says, "The requirements of this section should not apply to any sidewalk damaged by any tree, shrub, hedge, or other landscaping installed and maintained by the town of Fairfax." And so, what we did was we just put that in different sections of the ordinance, just to make it clear it's a responsibility of the property owners. The only exceptions really that we follow is if it butts the town property, like around Town Hall and a parcade, then we're taking care of the sidewalks. So, with that, that's pretty much what the item's about, and that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of staff?
I just have one question. Was this on the staff report? I'm not sure I understood it. Is that the town would only be required to maintain the sidewalk if it can be demonstrated that the town both installed the sidewalk and the landscaping? That I get. And continue to maintain landscaping causing the damage. If we installed the sidewalk and the landscaping, wouldn't we continue to maintain it or not necessarily?
No. Under provisions, how it works is if it can be demonstrated that we actually continue to maintain the landscaping and that landscaping is the cause of the damage, then we would be responsible. Otherwise, it's a responsibility for all the property owners. And that's pretty common in just about every town.
Thank you.
Other questions? John?
Yeah, I mean, if it's not maintained, isn't that when it gets damaged?
That, well, yes.
I mean, can a case be, I mean, playing devil's advocate here. I mean, if the town put in a sidewalk and put in a street tree and then didn't maintain it, and so, as a result of the lack of maintenance, it damaged the sidewalk?
Well, if you want to make that argument, but I could tell you this right now, it's an impossibility for any town to maintain every sidewalk and every tree ever installed in the community because sometimes it's installed in private property and landscaping. So, what, it only applies now to those trees that we actually maintain, and that's generally a parcade in our properties. Property owners, otherwise, you know, the trees have been there with their property since whenever, day one, some cases fifty, whatever, seventy years. And so, really, it's up to them to maintain the trees or shrubs or...
Yeah. I mean, I know I maintain mine outside of mine, but that's, I was just trying to...
So, if we maintain the trees on Drake in front of Perry's, then it remains our responsibility?
If we maintain the tree.
We occasionally do go out and trim the trees.
That doesn't, that doesn't meet the standard of maintenance, occasional trimming just because it's a hazard?
I have a question, actually. Just to clarify, in Section 3 of the attachment, it says, "Any person in possession of such lot by virtue of any permit or right." So, I'm not quite sure that if I were a renter, I would know what that meant unless the landlord said, "You have possession of that property and you need to maintain the..." I'm not sure what that actually means. Maybe that's a Janet question.
Yeah. So, I think when you're talking about, if I understand correctly, a tenant, that would be dictated by whatever their agreement says with the property owner that they're renting the property from. Some cases, they're responsible; some cases, they're not for maintaining the landscaping.
If no one is, okay, it gets down into the real, yeah. So, this is all in some kind, this is an agreement between tenant and landlord?
Right. But ultimately, it's always the property owner. I mean, they could try to transfer their responsibilities, but it's the property owner that we would hold responsible.
Okay. So, I guess I just wanted to make sure I understood what that meant. The person in possession of such lot, is that a tenant?
I think...
By virtue of any permit or right?
Yeah. If they have responsibility.
Okay. All righty. Any public comment? Come on up. Yeah.
Just a simple question. How does this pertain to a tree that maybe someone has a problem with and wants to cut it down? I want to know where the liability is, who makes the decision? Just, I'm a little confused about how this pertains to any of that.
If I understand the question correctly, if the tree is a responsibility of the property owner, if you wish to cut down a tree, then you need to get a perm, if the tree meets the standard, you go and get a tree, you try, go to a tree committee to get a permit to cut the tree.
Of course.
But is that, there's more to the question, though?
So, does this change at all affect a city, the liability of the city versus the liability of a property owner if there was a problem with the tree and there's a permit? I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, sometimes when laws are changed, there's some hidden reasons, so I just want to flush that out.
Actually, our intent here is, it doesn't, the language just clarifies, it doesn't change the standard of liability.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay. We'll bring it back up here.
Well, I'd be happy to introduce and waive first reading.
Is there any other public comment? Or did you close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. I forgot it was a public hearing. Is, that's it from the public? Okay. So, let's close the public hearing and bring it back up here.
Well, I was just going to introduce and waive first reading, read by title only in ordinance of the town, of the Council of the town of Fairfax, amending Chapter 12.44, "Streets, Trees, and Shrubs of the Town Code."
Second.
All right. So, we have a motion, Winesoff, second caller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Yeah, I'll...
Well, take your time.
Yeah.
Are you voting in favor or opposed?
I mean, it's basically, basically a clarification thing, so y'all vote aye on it then.
Okay. So, none opposed. All right. Passes. All righty. So, we are moving on to the regular agenda. And the first, item number 11, is to accept the 2015-16 mid-year budget review report. And it's a discussion item to consider budget revisions. And I think that Michael Vivret is our staff reporter.
Yes. So, before I turn it over to Michael Vivret, our finance director for the report, I just thought I'd make some introductory comments. One, as you could see, the report overall indicates that the general fund for the town is financially stable, revenue seem to be stable, and we have a good control over expenditures. Highlight is, we're estimating conservatively that we'll collect about $240,000 more in revenue than we originally anticipated, and that will save about $120,000 in expenditure costs. That adds up to about $360,000, a little more than 4% of our general fund expenditures. But more importantly, it's about 16% of our general fund balance at the start of the fiscal year. Pretty significant. We think it's mainly one-time revenues, one-time expenditures, but still a fairly large number. And then, some things just for the council maybe to keep in mind is, you know, it's budget time coming up. We hope to have a budget workshop scheduled in May, and you'll get requests from the town clerk to try to select those days. One of the key things for this upcoming budget, and something that actually we will go to the council in April to begin discussions, is that Measure D, the half-cent sales tax for the town, is slated to expire in April 2017. What that means is the town wishes to extend it. We would have to have something in the ballot this year. Obviously, it has huge financial implications to the town budget as well as to service levels. It's about $400,000 to $450,000 in revenue a year, about 8% of our general fund revenues. So, it's a pretty huge number, something to keep in mind. But, and then, the last thing is, interestingly, and a good thing, I think, is we're not actually recommending any mid-year budget adjustments this time. Somewhat rare not to have any adjustments. Kind of demonstrates the ability of our finance department and staff to manage the budget, and this year, we had some pretty good projections. I think one of the things to keep in mind, though, is you do have the $360,000 or so in surplus revenues and expenditure savings. And that, that be helpful to keep in mind when you get to Item 13, which is talking about financing of infrastructure, because that's something that you could be helpful to think about. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Michael to go ahead and run you through the report.
Thank you, Garrett. So, one of the things that I wanted to point out in this year's budget report is that, unlike last year, we have about $239,000 of revenues that we're expecting to get in excess of what we budgeted. Much of this, about $125,000 or so, is as a result of property taxes that have come in higher than what we originally projected. We originally projected that we would get about a 6.6% increase in property taxes. This is because we recognize that, you know, the decreases in property taxes that we've had over several years, because the real estate market's doing really well, we're going to be coming back up. And one of the things about property taxes is that, you know, while we do have Prop 13 in place that limits the increase of property taxes to 2% per year, when you have years when property taxes have declined, they can come back up much faster than 2%. They can come back up to what that line of 2% would be. And so, this year, instead of the 6%, so, 6% or so that we projected that we were going to get, the increase in property taxes has been closer to 8.8%. So, we're projecting that we're going to have about $125,000 more of property taxes this year. But it's something that I would caution you right off the bat to not expect to happen a lot over the next few years. We may be very close to where, coming back to where that 2% line is, and we might see a 2% increase happening, which we were, would be likely to be projecting anyway. So, our property taxes came up by about $125,000. Sales taxes also increased by about $70,000 or so. This is in part due to the state coming to an end of their triple flip program. Don't ask me to explain triple flip, but fortunately, it's not going to be around much longer. So, at, as of this year, there's going to be a true-up receipt that we get of about $70,000, and that's going to help with our sales taxes for this year. I met with the, our representative for Muni Services who does our sales tax projections, and she has projected that next year, we'll probably see a decrease in sales taxes because this true-up program has ended, or the triple flip program has ended. So, we saw this, we saw sales tax and property taxes doing very well. Our user taxes, we're actually projecting that we're going to have a decline in that. I noted that we budgeted that we would get $125,000 or so in utility user tax for telecom, and through December, we'd only received about $42,000. So, I'm projecting that we'll probably not achieve our budget of $125,000 this year for that. And this may be in part due to people switching over from landlines to cell phones, and those things don't have, the cell phones, et cetera, don't have utility user tax associated with them for the town. So, our other one-time revenues that we received this year also helped. We have some SB 90 reimbursements. SB 90 was a, is a program that the state reimburses the cities for things that they mandate that the, that the towns do. For example, bulletproof vests. If they say that you've got to have bulletproof vests, they're supposed to give a reimbursement to the towns if the towns submit for that. And over the budget time period that they had real problems with the state, they held back on these reimbursements. So, we saw about $23,000 of reimbursements in the first six months here. As the state started to see their budget improve, they decided to cut loose with some of the funds to the cities to reimburse them for SB 90 expenses that were incurred. And so, I don't expect that that kind of thing will continue into the future. It's a one-time revenue, but it does contribute to the fact that we have a couple hundred thousand over what we had projected. Expense-wise, we're right on key with, as far as our personnel costs. Personnel costs represent the largest portion of our expenses. We're seeing that salaries expenses are at 90, or 49.7% of what we expected. Overtime costs are exactly 50% of what we projected at the six-month mark. And although health costs are 52% spent at December, we've actually seen that the increase that we received in health expenses in January was 3.3%. We budgeted to have a 5% increase, so we'll actually see a reduction during the second six months for our healthcare. And surprisingly, we saw our dental rates go down this, this last January. And so, we're projecting health costs to be within budget on that. We're also expecting that per's retirement costs will be within budget. We had several one-time expenses that contributed to the savings of $120,000 within expenses, including saving about $13,000 by not having to have the local election. We also were able to defer $28,000 in planning fees, and within the non-departmental budget, we're expecting that we'll save about $50,000 there. So, all the departments are, have spent, they budgeted well this year. We only had a few instances where there was slightly more than 50% of budget spent. And so, you know, I think, I think we're on track as far as that goes. Garrett, do you want to comment on capital improvements?
Sure. So, under the CIP, you know, these are expenses through December. And obviously, for capital improvement projects, it's somewhat hard to project just because a lot of expenses could happen at the latter part of the year, example being the women's club. A lot of these improvement expenses actually happened or paid after December 31st. But some of the things, highlights, I think the one thing, it's Manzita Road Repair that was improved, that's probably about $30,000 under budget. One question for the council is the sidewalk repair program that you adopted. We've had about seven participants to date. Program was funded at the level to, I think, fund 10 participants at least receiving the possible loan. You can either, you know, one option is you get allocate more money now, this action, or just wait till we have to come back to you for more funding. And then, in that line item, you know, we did purchase all those new recycling and trash stations to be located in downtown, and we anticipate installing those within the next 30 days. But other than that, unless there's specific questions, I think that concludes the staff report.
One question on the sidewalk repair program.
So, could we take that up when we do the budget? Or, I know one of the things, if we have seven to date, that's only three more available this year, I guess, would, are you suggesting that we could potentially do this right now? I don't, or just wait and see what happens when you run out, and then you just come to us and ask if we could extend?
Either way, you get alloc, I'll make this up. You get allocate $5,000 more to the program, or you could just wait, and if we hit 10, then we'll just come back to you and request more funding.
And what was, I forget. We had two things. It was the waiver of the permit fee, and then also, what was the amount? We contributed $500 or a thousand?
A $500 grant. I think I said loan, but it's a grant.
And I think, and, yeah, it was a grant.
It's a grant.
And I think the permit fee's around 500, so I think it adds up to a thousand.
Roughly. A thousand.
And this was done by people individually applying for this?
Right.
And there's three more spots? Okay. So, we need to let people know.
Yeah. And I would, I would just suggest that it might be a good idea to think about another $5,000 right now because people are really actively taking it up. I think when we started it, we thought it wasn't a lot of money. It would help, but it sounds like people are really interested in it. So, that's good news because that helps with people not tripping and falling on sidewalks.
Yeah.
On that note, the waiver of the fee doesn't really affect our budget, right? Because that's money that wouldn't come in anyways.
Well, actually, what we do is, out of the money we budgeted, the $10,000, that money just goes over to the building fund, so it keeps the building department whole.
Okay. Well, I mean, I would say, well, if we, if we can allocate some more for the sidewalk thing, I mean, because I think that helps everybody in the community, and stops trips and falls, and, you know, our sidewalks need help.
How much did we put, did we allocate last year?
We did 10, and so, we're at seven. We've still got about five more months of the year, and we already have seven participants, which would mean 3,000 left. So, if we put 5,000 in, we wouldn't have to have staff come back to a council meeting if more people got involved. And I believe when we approved it, because I was the one who kind of came up with this idea, we said, "Let's see how it goes." And it looks like it's going great.
Yeah. And I think more people hearing about it, too, through things just like this, we'll get more than three more people coming up.
Okay. So, do we have, in what order do we want to do this? Continue with the questions here, or do we want to do this? I know we want to go...
Unless you have, yeah, unless you have specific questions of staff, then I would suggest to see if there's any public comment, and then when it comes back to the council, you can provide direction.
Then we'll come back and do it. Okay. So, you have questions?
Yeah. Just some of the nomenclature, triple flip. I mean, I won't ask about that, but VLF swap and ERAF revenues, when you're talking about property taxes, what are, what are those, what does that mean?
A lot of these were creative things that came, that the state came up with in order to balance their budget. The VLF swap, they eliminated the VLF fee when Arnold came into office, they...
Vehicle license fee.
What's that? Vehicle license fee.
Vehicle license, okay.
Right.
I was wondering...
And they swapped, they swapped that for property taxes in order to improve the timing of revenues that the state was going to receive. So, they traded property taxes, you know, it was, there was a lot of shell games going on with the taxes.
So, maybe just what the acronyms mean helps.
Yeah.
So, vehicle license fee is one. What's ERAF stand for?
Sure.
Okay. ERAF stands for Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund.
Okay. Just raised the issue, and I think it's more policy than anything else. Seems as if the UUT is going to go right into the, right into the ground over the next couple of years. I don't know that we would even want to be thinking about it as a positive budget item or an expected revenue source, because it's dropping precipitously, to the point where I think what we get is nice, but almost not unexpected, but I wouldn't be using it as a bulk work for the foundation of our, of our budgeting. The other one, it sort of seems in play, too, on the hotel occupancy tax. Depending on how we go forward on Airbnb, that number is going to potentially expand exponentially over where we are. So, I was intrigued that you decided, in an excellent report, to actually group those two together under user taxes, because I think of all the ones that are here in their scope, those are the two that are most valuable.
The energy utility user tax is not going to go away. I think it's the landline potentially, because cell phones do not have utility fees, but the energy utility fees are not going away. So, that's the big chunk of it.
Really? Look at these numbers. If you guys budgeted at 125, and it's coming in at 42, and it...
Energy UUT is 241,000.
You guys want to clarify this? Because I'm reading at the bottom of the page here. Because I'm reading at the bottom of the page here.
We budgeted two hundred and twenty-five thousand for energy. We're seeing a slight increase on that of about sixteen thousand.
Right.
So we're slightly over with energy. However, telecom, we've budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and so far, we've only received forty-two thousand. So we're projecting that we're actually going to be, you know, un, under-receiving revenue there by about forty thousand.
Right. But in, in days of yore, the part of the UUT that dealt with telecom was rather high. Now it's, it's falling off the cliff.
Right.
So for future budgeting, I don't see that number even stabilizing. I think it's going to continue.
I think it's, it's only going to go down.
Right.
Every once in a while, I get calls from agencies saying, do we have any plans of putting a UUT on cable? So it seems to me there's, that's one alternative that some cities are looking at in order to offset their losses in, in telecom.
So, any other questions? No? Out to the public? Any public comment, questions, concerns? Okay. Seeing none, bringing it back.
Well, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for this. It's very helpful. I would like to suggest that we consider allocating another five thousand. I mean, I would want to make a motion to allocate another five thousand to the sidewalk program, but my personal opinion in reviewing the rest of this is it can wait for the budget for next year. So am I making a motion to this effect? I'm not really sure what I'm doing.
Yes, you would make a motion to allocate five thousand dollars.
So I would make a motion to allocate five thousand dollars to the sidewalk program and otherwise just accept the report.
Is there a second?
There's a second there.
Okay, so Kohler, motion Kohler and second read? All those in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And anyone opposed? No. Okay. So that concludes the, what's that? No, I understand. Okay. So moving on to agenda item twelve. And here we go. So the subject is a discussion and consideration of the schedule to consider ordinances regarding medical marijuana cultivation and delivery standards and community outreach plan regarding such ordinances. Garrett, the staff report, please.
Sure. As background, you were caught your February meeting, the council deferred its adoption of ordinance number seven nine seven to ban medical marijuana cultivation with exceptions for personal cultivation for qualified patients and primary caregivers. Prior to that meeting, the state actually eliminated the March first deadline. So given that, that was prior to the meeting, the council determined that it'd be best to defer its discussion on the adoption of the ordinance. And at that time, the council indicated a goal or objective would be to try to solicit more community input on the issues, but to also have a timeline for further consideration regarding medical marijuana cultivation, as well as a consideration of standards for delivery of medical marijuana. At that meeting, staff indicated it would report back at this meeting with a proposed timeline for consideration, as well as a community outreach plan. And so with that, with regard to medical marijuana cultivation, again, the council indicated one, more community input, but prefer not to have any more community workshops as you've been discussing this matter since your November council meeting and had several meetings to consider the ordinance. So with that, what staff's suggesting is that we use our town online forum, and that's run by Peak Democracy. What we would propose is we would put out forum-type questions on our website. We would then advertise that or market that to the community via our town newsletter, via our website, and via Nextdoor. And what we would do is we'd indicate to the public that that survey would be available from March fourth to March twenty-sixth. Then what we would do is we, that would give us some time then to compile the results and bring that back to the council at your April sixth meeting. At that time, we had also come back to the council with consideration of ordinance number seven nine seven, as well as any other recommendations or options based on the results of the online forum. Also, what we would do is we'd let the community know about the council meeting on April sixth via the same type of notification methods we would use for the online forum. And then something related to online forum should, should be noted, it's somewhat limited, but we think it can get enough comments and hopefully to give the council a good feel for their perspective of the community on that issue. So again, to summarize, whenever it comes to medical marijuana cultivation, March fourth through the twenty-sixth, we would have an online forum available for people to participate in. April sixth, we would intend to come back to the council with the results of the online forum, the consideration of the second reading of ordinance seven nine seven, and any additional staff recommendations based on the results from the online forum. With regard to medical marijuana delivery standards, a little as background, in October, when the governor signed AB two four three, he also signed AB two six six. And AB two six six basically established the state licensing and regulatory framework for variety issues, including transportation, storage, distribution, sale, medical marijuana. That includes delivery. The council at your last meeting did express interest in setting up standards for delivery related to medical marijuana. It should be noted, and we actually attached this item as background information to the staff report, that back in 2010, the Planning Commission actually adopted delivery standards for the then medical marijuana dispensary in town. It would seem to us that that would be a good place to, to start, to use as a framework for discussion. So similar to the process we're proposing for the medical marijuana cultivation, for delivery, we'd do the same thing. We'd have an online forum, we'd advertise it using our town newsletter, website, and Nextdoor. The only twist to that would be then the results of that report, as well as discussion when it comes to delivery, but then go to the Planning Commission. And so maybe to summarize on that one, what we're proposing for medical marijuana delivery is March fourth, or maybe early part of the next week, to April eighth, there'd be the online forum related to delivery. And then April twenty-first, we would then take the results of the online forum to the Planning Commission, as well as a general discussion related to the standards, in essence, what they did previously. And then what we anticipate is based on that direction from the Planning Commission, we'd go back to them in May with an actual proposed ordinance for them to recommend to the council. And then the best-case scenario, timing-wise, would be the council would be able to consider ordinance on delivery of medical marijuana at your July meeting. And so what I'm proposing this evening is perhaps we would take each schedule separately just to see if that works for the council, if you want to tweak it, or you have some other things you'd like staff to explore. But with that, that concludes the staff report.
Okay. Questions? Barbara?
I have, I have two questions, and if you want me to do them, they're on each section. So on the medical marijuana cultivation, the April sixth date, I'm not sure I understand. We're going to hear the online forum results, and are we going to just discuss whether, or based on your proposal, we would just discuss whether we want to consider the second reading? Just, I guess, what it occurs to me is that we're going to get the results of the forum. We would want to discuss that and say, what does that tell us about what we want to do? So I'm, I don't see that actually doing a second reading of an ordinance makes sense. It's more discussing about whether or not we would want to do that second reading at a future date. Is, is that what you're conveying? I'm not clear.
My question is the same, actually. And I just wanted, how is it that you'll bring us something in the form of a second reading before we've had a chance to hear the, right?
Here's our, the staff's thought pattern, or maybe here's my thought pattern, was you'd have the results, that'd be one agenda item, and then some recommendations related to that. But what I heard from the council in the last meeting, at least from one council member, was concerned that we need to do something about the second reading. And so I wanted to put the second reading of the ordinance on the agenda so the council could take action on it or provide additional information on it, but we don't have to do that. We don't need to put it on there, but that was one thing that wasn't clear to staff as we prepared this, is if you wanted to have that option, or you prefer not to have that option, and really have more broader discussion on the online forum and then provide direction at that time.
Let's see what everybody has to say and what the public has to say, and then we'll come back and make, yeah.
I have a second question, and that is on the delivery standards. The question about AB two six six. I correct that the state kind of deadline or is January first, 2017? I'm trying to backtrack this because the schedule looks good if, if we're targeting trying to be online before January first, 2017. I just didn't have that date. Is that correct? Okay, so Janet, maybe you should probably say yes in the mic, so we're recording that.
Sure. Yes, that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, that makes sense. I just needed that date. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Peter?
AB two sixty-six, does this preempt in any way our ability to, you know, regulate dispensaries or deliveries?
Well, there will be state licensing, and so if you want to have different, if you want to have your own regulations, we'd like to have them on the books.
And so dispensaries would have to be licensed with the state and delivery services?
It is a, it's a licensing structure, but if you, you know, if you don't have something right now, there's no deadline like there was the March first deadline. But arguably, if somebody gets a state license and they're grandfathered in, and you come in with different regulations, we'll have a discussion or an argument about whether or not they've already grandfathered in.
And are we able to regulate outside, an outside delivery service that's located outside of Fairfax in terms of their deliveries within Fairfax? Because it seems like that would be very desirable to be able to do. Are we able to do that with a, a local ordinance saying that if you're going to deliver in Fairfax, you need to do certain things, meet certain criteria?
Yeah, some, some cities have attempted to do that. I don't think that's been challenged yet. I can see that it might be, but that is something that we're going to be looking at.
And then, for example, could we require that they obtain a Fairfax business license if they're going to deliver in Fairfax, much as we require tree services?
Yeah, if you do business in town, you're supposed to.
If you do business in town, you're supposed to have a business license.
And then can we collect sales taxes on deliveries into Fairfax even if the business is located in another city, like San Francisco?
Point of sale, point of sale is here?
Unless it's online somehow.
Yeah.
That is a tricky question. Typically, it's point of sale. Although if you could do it online, like you do online shopping, you do get the half percent. So the answer is I, I don't know. We'd have to look into it.
We'd have to look and check into that.
Those are, those are two, three aspects that I would really like to see, because a lot of the delivery services are, you know, from outside of Fairfax, San Francisco. It's a bit of the Wild West, and we, I think, should have some idea, at least, who's delivering in, in our town. So I really like the idea of requiring business licenses. I think we should try to collect sales taxes. And my, and I'm wondering too, in terms of, I wonder if we, if it's desirable to, I'm just putting this out there, try to craft an ordinance for regulating a dispensary physically located here, because it's a lot of, take an awful lot of time to come up with regulations. Or do we want to just rely on the use permit process?
Are you talking about dispensary now?
I'm talking, I'm talking about, yeah, dispensary.
We, we have that on the books. We have an ordinance governing dispensaries, and, I mean, they need a use permit, but they have to meet all the standards.
Okay. Because I'm, so this is just for delivery standards?
It's only for delivery standards, and we just provided that as background that there was a discussion by the Planning Commission in the past regarding delivery standards for dispensary in town.
Okay. And, you know, again, I, it still may be more useful in some ways if a business wanted to set up a delivery that's physically located in the town to have it subject to a use permit because there, there are so many issues involved with, with marijuana dispensaries because we're, we're in this gray area where, you know, it's still a controlled substance. It still has a lot of high cash value. And I, I think we really want to have very rigorous standards in place for a business. And if we set up a bunch of, you know, set up a regulatory framework, are they able to, is a dispensary able to open just as a matter of right versus going through the use permit process?
No, you, dispensary still would require a use permit unless, I thought maybe you were saying anybody who does delivery needs a use permit, even if they're not in the community.
Isn't this, this item is only dealing with-
It's kind of dealing with the-
Cultivation, and then, and when we were, talk about that, and then the delivery. We're not talking about dispensaries at this point, right?
Right, right. We already have a dispensary ordinance, you know, this would govern delivery, although a subset is, this does bring up the notion that is the council thinking it wants to chime on, in on this first, prior to taking it to Planning Commission in order to set their framework for their discussion? That wasn't what staff was thinking, but that is something for the council to think about it.
And then, yeah, I, I, these are, I mean, these are some things that I think would be important. Again, regulating outside deliveries to the extent we can, business license, collecting sales taxes, those are things I'd like to see. And also, no deliveries to minors, because I think there's a lot of potential problems for that. And those are, you know, four things that I would like to see any, any ordinance related to deliveries address. Just, that's my initial thoughts.
Okay, any other, John?
Yeah, and I guess as a clarifying thing, I mean, much the same as, as our regulations around cultivation that we were talking about a couple of months back for several months. Our motivation here is to preserve jurisdiction on this. And, you know, we also need to get a lot of things right. I mean, like the things that you're, you're bringing up, Peter, are, I think, very legitimate concerns, and those are, would be good to have on there. But in terms of a longer-term thing, basically what we're doing is preserving jurisdiction.
Yes.
So.
I actually have a question, a broader question. So when we talked about it last month, it was, you know, what's the hurry in my mind? And there's no more deadline, and what, you know, the state isn't going to do anything until January 2017 anyway. And my question is, what, I, I'd like to be actually kept up to date as what's happening at the state in terms of recreational and some of the, you know, there's all kinds of different things going on. I would love to have us maybe monthly at this point updated, because my concern, no, really, it's coming fast. And my concern is that we do all of this, and how much of it will be effective policy or useful policy if everything changes and recreational goes through in November? Is it laying a framework in terms of delivery, in terms of cultivation, that will then carry over if we have a full legalization of recreational marijuana? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes, I do, I think. I believe that the, the new laws that passed and were effective January first of this year are an attempt to begin to set up a regulatory framework, period. Right now, it's just medical, but it may not be just medical a year from now, or even sooner. So I think it is, and I think that is something that is a smart move, it's something that the legislators who drafted these bills were, really had that in mind. Now, having said that, we have no idea what's going to happen in the fall, and it's not, I mean, there are many forms- I mean, there are many forms it could take. Something may pass, it may not. What form is it in, you know? This is something that we just, it's hard to speculate right now, but we can certainly keep you up to date on, you know, what's qualified for the ballot and what's, you know, what's likely to be on. We can certainly, you know, give you updates on that.
Okay, can we go out to?
Yeah, can I, one other question though. The fact that in our dispensary ordinance, there was regulation of delivery, of that dispensary's deliveries, does that reserve jurisdiction for us?
No, it was part of their use permit, so it was--
Okay, so we need to have, describe something specifically to this.
Yeah, we have a dispensary ordinance. It'd be nice to have an ordinance that deals with cultivation and it'd be nice to have an ordinance that deals with delivery.
And break it all up into--
Ultimately, I'd like to, yeah, have them all together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go out to the public? Any public comment? Please come forward. Hi, Ryan.
My name is Ryan Skalski and I live at 2374 Sir Francis Drake and I'm the Executive Director of Marin Patient Access and I want to start by thanking you for being proactive in regulation. And I'm really excited that you're addressing the AB 266 and the delivery component. I think that's going to be a big deal and it's a lot to think about. And I want to give a little bit, real quick background about myself. I have, I've spent the last 10 years in the cannabis industry. More than half of that was spent with a small collective in San Francisco doing deliveries and I am now a consultant with a group called Yerba California that's in the East Bay and they're also a delivery base serviced, so this really is my expertise. I know a lot about it and, you know, I know you have some really good questions, Peter, and I think I could help you with a lot of those. And I've also had a chance to read the conditions of approval that were created for Lynette and the Marin Alliance and I think that's a really good place to start. I think, you know, you did a really great job. I think there's a lot to think about with that. I just want to give one example of where more thought does need to be put into it because things, you know, are changing and it's coming fast, like you said. For example, item 33 requires that each delivery vehicle be staffed by two drivers. Just to put this in context so you see how it's not quite realistic, if you were, you know, Marin is a big spread out area and if you were to pay a delivery driver, say $17 with taxes, it comes out to, say, 22. If, you know, it would cost roughly $44 simply to get to the medicine to the patient and to provide a brief consultation. And, you know, this would drive up the cost of medicine to the patient and effectively support less expensive black market transactions. And there's a few little things in the regulations that you have now that need some work, but I think you got a really good start on it and I think it's strong. I think you guys did a really great job when you worked out everything for Lynette and I think it's pretty thorough. But I do foresee some other issues, but for the sake of time, I just want to offer my services to the council and I know you're doing this awesome thing online. I think that's a great idea because I think a lot of people are uncomfortable in public talking about things about cannabis, but I think online, I think you're going to get a lot more responses, you know? And I think you'll get a good idea of what, you know, the public opinion really is. And really, I just want to thank you and, you know, I look forward to working together through, you know, through the online system or personally, you can please feel free to reach out to me. And I support your proposed schedule of the public hearings for the Planning Commission and for the council and the new chairs are awesome. And thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. You know, if you would and you've already picked out the places in there, give us some, give us some input, shoot off an email and call out some of those spots. Thank you. So let's bring it back and we should go back and talk about the, oh, I'm sorry, was anybody else here to speak? Nope. Okay, so coming back, let's go back to that original piece that we were talking about in terms of the, the public, getting back to the survey and then the second reading on April 6th.
I suggest for the first part, dealing with the cultivation, I think the schedule, the way it's written, I would make a change to that. I think April 6th would be for consideration of online forum. And in that context, talking about what we've already done in that ordinance rather than doing a second reading. And then at the April 6th meeting, I'm sorry, no, I'm saying at the April 6th meeting, we would have a consideration of the online forum results and discuss what we did in the ordinance number 797 in that context. And then potentially in the May meeting, depending on how that proceeds, we might ask for revised ordinance, we might ask for the second reading, but I think we should probably have a schedule, you know, of the next meeting rather than trying to lump it all in one. I don't think that gives us enough time to really carefully consider what we learn in the online forum and then really go back and say, well, what did we do in ordinance 797? Does that work? Is that, does that need to be changed? So that's what I would suggest for that because we're doing this in two separate pieces. I do like the second piece though, the delivery standards, so I wouldn't make any change to what you've done with that.
Any other, any other thoughts?
Yeah, a question. The peak democracy, does that indicate, do people have to indicate, you know, their names or where they live? Because, you know, we, I would want to know if we're getting a bunch of, you know, comments from people in Fairfax or outside of Fairfax.
I think they're, I'm not too sure about the name, but peak democracy is set up so you could put in your name and you put in your address and what it does is it maps it so that ultimately the council, you would get a map of roughly where the participants to survey are responding from and from that you could figure out if they're within the town limits or not. There is a function of peak democracy in which it could be totally anonymous, but what it does is it just creates a PDF file and sends it in. It doesn't include it in its data. What we've found in the past is that most people fill out the information, they put their name and their address. No one else could see their, their address, but it allows us for the mapping function. So that really hasn't been too much of a problem.
Yeah, again, I'd really want to be able to know, okay, which comments are from within Fairfax, which ones are outside of Fairfax?
Yeah, and also to ensure that people don't vote five times or whatever.
Right.
But yeah, I think it's important to describe to people that their names and addresses won't be public, you know, so they know that they're relatively anonymous, but they're being tracked for, you know, just on the map to make sure that.
I think just to be clear is people on the site can't, maybe can't see the information, but I couldn't protect it under the Public Records Act if someone really wanted it. But if, but if we have it. The problem right now is, those are all good questions, it's just that I can't remember off the top of my head how everything works in peak democracy just because, well, we have the Airbnb--
Somebody else's program.
But I haven't gone back in and ran the reports. If I did, then I could give you all your answers.
I mean, my main concern is since we're not having any kind of an extra workshop or opportunity for people to show up, we need to let people know that that peak democracy is happening. So can you just review one more time, like how it is we're going to let people know it's a short window that they have? So what's the plan?
So I'd send it out to Nextdoor and I forget, how many people are in Nextdoor? A thousand? I forget. Anyway, the town newsletter, we put in that, send that out. That's about 800 email recipients. We put it on our website and typically what we do is we also ask the volunteers and the other organizations to let people know about the surveys and they send it out and they email this. There's some duplication, but all told, you know, you're probably covering, I would have to guess, somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 residents.
So when would the newsletter go out?
Well, the game plan would, that would have to go out rather soon.
Tomorrow?
Ooh, tomorrow might be a little soon since, we don't have it up on Airbnb, Airbnb. We don't have it up on peak democracy that. We have a draft of what we'd like to put up, but I need to run that by them. So game plan is for cultivation, try to get something up on Friday, then the early part of next week for delivery. Newsletter would either be Friday or Monday.
I could also suggest a press release and, yeah, that go to the Sun, the IJ, Ross Fowler reporter.
And Garrett, I also would very much like to be, you know, able to check it out before you put it up on peak democracy, just to, just to look at it with you or to see it prior to going up. Can we do that?
Is that what all the council members want to do or you just want to designate one?
Oh, would you like to designate me?
I would designate the mayor to do that.
Sure. And I would also suggest, are you going to have a copy of the proposed ordinance available for people to see?
Generally what we, generally what we do is there's introductory comment and in that it does drive, it does drive, it does recommend to people if they like, they could see the ordinance and staff reports on the town website and there's a link. We don't attach it actually to the--
But you make it readily available for people to actually read it. Okay.
All right, everyone, let's then bring it back. Is someone like to--
I'll make a motion. I would like to make a motion to accept the schedule for the delivery standards and for the cultivation standards, make a revision to April 6 whereby we would just consider the online forum and discuss ordinance 797 in that context and at the May meeting, potentially take up an ordinance or have further discussion, whatever's decided. That's the end of my motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, so Kohler, motion Kohler and second read and all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Mayor, I think it's, it's a little after 10, but I would also like to suggest as we discuss the last two items, we have people waiting for the toilet ordinance, so I would suggest that perhaps we move item 13 to be number 14.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that. So we will move directly to item 14 and, let me just take a really quick look here. Okay, so we should be fine. So item 14, the subject is to introduce introduction and first reading by title only of ordinance of the town of Fairfax, amending town code, chapter 17.132, water conservation, reducing the effective flush volumes for newly installed toilets and for toilets on properties involved in sales or transfers from 1.6 to 1.28 gallons.
Is anybody getting a note on it?
Approximately 80 to 90.
This time. Okay, and Garrett, staff report.
Okay, so as background, you may recall that we actually introduced this ordinance at your November meeting and at that time, we then scheduled the second reading of the ordinance in December. At that time, we did receive comments from the Marin Association Realtors. Response to that, we pulled the item for the agenda, staff met with the association and then we came back to the council at your February meeting. With the second, with the first reading proposing revisions to the ordinance, what we proposed at the time, what the council directors do is we inserted a clause that would say, in essence, that the change would happen within 60 days of the sale or transfer of property. At the February 2nd meeting, the council also indicated you'd like us to add a condition or a statement to effect that the requirement's not a condition of the sale or transfer of property. That's what this ordinance does include. We have discussed these revisions with the Marin Association Realtors. Obviously, it didn't adequately address their concerns. Attached the staff report with there's, was a letter as indicated by Councilmember Winesoff, I believe you've received probably 80, I think it's actually over 90 emails expressing their concern. It's pretty much in their email, it's kind of basic, but one of the things it did point out is a campaign to address the issues and they talked about rebates. I think Councilmember Kohler suggested, I mentioned that the Water District does have a rebate for high efficiency toilets, up to $150,000 per toilet and that actually the Department of Water Resources also has a rebate program up to $100. But that being said, our understanding is MAR still does not believe these revisions accurately address their concerns, so the options for the council are that you could adopt the second reading as is. If you make revisions, then it would become a first reading, which would mean that you would have to, oh wait, this is the first reading. This is reading, sorry, I'm all mixed up. So what happened is we changed it, no matter, if you adopt this or make changes, it'd be the first reading, we'll come back to you next month with the second reading. I apologize. I even got all mixed up. And that pretty much concludes the staff report.
Thanks. So any questions from council? No questions? Okay, so let's open it up to the public.
I'm Aaron Council, Larry Bragman, Hickory. And I'm actually here in, as a private citizen and also as your Division III representative for the Water District. And I really appreciate you taking this up. I know you've taken some flak for taking it up, but as the staff report notes, this has been part of our Fairfax code for 15 years. And really, all we're doing is updating the code. And in that regard, I just want to point out to you, and I've actually brought copies of the California Plumbing Code, the code changed five years ago. So the change that the council is considering is really bringing our town code up to the California code, which changed some five years ago. So it's, we're not sort of jumping ahead of the queue. The standard has been the standard for some five years.
Good question, Larry?
Sure.
Because that's interesting. In our section 040, it adds language that effectively, the requirement to replace non-compliant toilets with water conserving toilets shall not delay the sale or transfer of the property, but that these new toilets, the lower ones, shall be put into place no later than 60 days after the sale or transfer of the property. Is that in the plumbing code?
No, no. The plumbing code really addresses the specification for products sold or installed in California.
Oh, so that's the 0-- 30 part.
So the standard in California was tightened some five years ago. Went from 1.6 to 1.28. And cumulatively, it does have a big impact on water usage and water usage also has a big impact on energy use. So, I mean, I, it's kind of hard to remind everybody, given the weather conditions, we're still in drought. And I would say from my experience in the water world, Marin is sort of in a tenuous state of, I wouldn't say permanent drought, but we're in a state of permanent water, not shortage, but let's just say we need to be in a permanent state of conservation mindedness and conservation consciousness. And this has a big impact. The reduction in the per flush usage of these fixtures, I, you know, compared to the 3.6 to the old 1.6, the statistics I read were 10,000 gallons a year per fixture. Well, that has a big impact. An acre foot is about 325,000 gallons. So in other words, 30 new fixtures, you've saved an acre foot. We, the district, the ratepayers are importing water now. We're paying to import water from Sonoma County. So we're into that for $5 million a year minimum. We can buy up to another 5,000 acre feet a year. So as we conserve, we're also saving money. We're also, I think, really providing resources to grow our economy and use our water more efficiently, so.
Yes, absolutely. There's two parts here, so I'm wondering if you're agreeing with both of them. The one is section 030, which is that whenever a toilet's replaced, it's got to be 1.28, can't exceed 1.28. I don't-- got to be a 1.28, can't exceed 1.28. I don't think there's any disagreement on that. And that's probably what the plumbing code is. But the section 040, which is the thing that MAR is concerned about. So as our representative, maybe you can, we're all, I think, I'm going to go out on a limb here. I think we're all in agreement that we're going to make it, if you get a new toilet, you're going to get a 1.28. There's no doubt about that. But it's the question of the MAR issue that I think is...
Right. And I think the way we've addressed that in a couple ways, or I should say you have, one, we've taken it out of escrow completely. So it's not going to interfere with escrow, it's not going to interfere with sales. And, you know, I hear the MAR argument, I've addressed them when I actually ran for the office a couple years ago. I mean, let me just kind of give you kind of a brief overview. My, my position is this is part of changing community standards. If, you know, the town of Phoenix, Arizona, has required high efficiency fixtures for many, many years. Phoenix has required gray water usage. Well, guess what? MMWD, your Water District, now is going to require gray water installation for new homes and major remodels. So the standards are changing as we really begin to understand how precious this resource is and that we're always going to be in a state of needing to have higher consciousness about use and waste of the resource. You know, the other thing I find interesting about the MAR argument is the other defects that are discovered on the town's inspection generally are addressed. So let's say there's a real estate inspection and our, our building inspector goes in and sees it's all knob and tube wiring or some other defective condition, that, that's dealt with. And I don't really understand why this simple thing is being, is being contested as vociferously as it is because when you do a real estate transaction, I think everybody on the council's done a real estate transaction. I've done a couple, I've bought a couple homes. You go through a process of inspection and repair. And this is so simple and virtually at no cost because the Water District offers $150 rebate per fixture, which pretty much covers the cost of the fixture.
Larry, can I just, can I interrupt there for a quick question?
Sure.
So, I was looking at the website, at MMWD website, and it says that that 150, the 100, sorry, you must be replacing a toilet using 3.5 gallons per flush or greater or 1.6 gallons per flush model year 2001 or older. So I'm thinking that those MAR folks who are writing are more concerned about, like, what about the folks that just put in a 1.6, you know, in 2012, not the ones that had them in there since before 2001?
You know...
It says the rebate doesn't exist for those that are in the last 15 years?
I think you could write into your ordinance that if it's a 1.6, it has to be 10 years older, older, or something like that, so that you're not creating waste. I asked you, you know, so you could mimic that language real easily. But, and that's fine because as Frank is probably going to mention, there's probably a lot of houses here that still have the really old fixtures in them, the 3.6s. Because, you know, we need to encourage our town to improve its building and safety and, and, and water efficiency. So yeah, if you, you know, if you guys feel like that's, you know, a good compromise that is going to kind of take care of that concern for that group of people, sure. You know, you're still going to be leading the way for Marin as far as enforcing water and energy efficiency. So, you know, if that makes you more comfortable to do that, yeah, you can, you can take that language out of...
Question for you, Larry.
Yeah.
So I hear you. I think a lot of people probably would not have the data on when they bought a toilet.
I think there may be a stamp, there's a stamp on it when it's manufactured.
I know I just replaced three and I've been all over the floor on those and I don't see any stamp on it, but, but I will...
I'm told by our conservation stamp, our staff.
But I would also say this is that, you know, the houses in Marin sell for an incredible amount of money. Even where I live, which is townhouses, it's amazing. It's a two-bedroom apartment selling for $600,000. It's truly incredible. And I know when my mother died and we sold her condo, there was a change out at point of sale required in Orange County and we did it. It was very easy. It's not, it's a toilet, it's not a remodel of the entire place. And we bought a toilet for 150 and paid someone $100. That did not, we sold this for $100,000, not for 600,000, but it didn't make or break the sale. It was not a big deal. I really, it was, it was more work than what we wanted to do, but we did it. It was easy and it didn't slow down the escrow. But I guess my point is, if, when I was looking at EPA's Watersense site, so this is EPA, it's not just some Google thing I found, it said toilets are by far the main source of water use in the home, accounting for nearly 30% of an average home's indoor water consumption. That's amazing to me.
Yeah.
And then it went on to talk about the one, difference between the 1.6 and the 1.28, 20% difference in water. So if we're truly committed to conservation, yeah, changing out a toilet that maybe somebody changed five years ago, maybe that seems like waste. But when we think about the true costs of these things, when we add up what we're doing in buying water and not water conservation, I think the true costs are so much higher.
Yeah.
It just seems to me like construction debris is required to be recycled, but, and our homes go for so much here that, you know, a couple hundred dollars, even if we can't get a, a break on a rebate from MMWD, but the DWR rebate does not have that condition. They only pay for up to one and it's only $100, but it is one.
Yeah.
So I will just say, I guess, I was pretty much shocked when I read 30% of your home is from the toilets.
Yeah, we were literally flushing our, our water resource away.
Right.
So yeah, it's an incredible amount.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? We're asking.
Can you even buy a 1.6 right now or are they all 1.28 because of California building?
You, I think, on the dual flush, I think the dual flush, the, the solid flush is actually higher than 1.28, but the liquid flush is less. So the standard kind of averages the two out.
It averages at 1.28.
So, yeah. So I think there are some, the plumbing code does allow that kind of variation in the volume of, the flush volume.
It's like the EPA combined mileage city versus a highway.
Yeah, well, you know, we're, you know, and you want to talk about the real cost of water, you know, we're not act, even though we are paying for imported water, you know, I don't know if that cost really includes habitat destruction, all the things that go along with it. I mean, that's what we pay Sonoma County Water Agency. But there's a lot of other things that our use of water causes. Even here in Marin, you know, we're, we're dealing right now trying to restore the watershed. We're on the verge of losing signal species in Marin County right now. And we're spending a lot of money trying to bring back this watershed. So to the extent that this town can lead the way and help raise consciousness about how valuable this resource is, hey, that's what, to me, that's what Fairfax is about.
Are there any, any other cities or towns? What has Tiburon done with theirs? Because that's what I was looking at.
Tiburon has a, they have a building inspection program, but I don't know if any other town has the same change out requirement we do on sale or transfer.
Okay, on a sale?
The lang...
Because isn't Tiburon's language is like, the failure to meet the requirement does not invalidate a sale or transfer? So it must be...
Yeah, but we already, we already have that in our code for the resale sale.
Yeah, we've got that. And, and how Tiburon works is when they do the inspection, if it's a, if it's what they call a safety defect, that will be a condition of sale or a condition of their approving the sale. So they make a distinction between, you know, if you have an electrical panel that's burned out or a water heater that's not strapped down or, you know, some other serious public safety defect, they're going to, they're going to cite you on that and that's going to need to be taken care of. Others, cosmetic, not public safety, not so much. So that's kind of how they, they make that distinction. But our program here is a good program. I mean, all we're really doing is updating the program to meet current standards. It, it doesn't add any additional obligation. As a matter of fact, it actually increases the convenience to everybody involved by taking it out of that escrow when everybody's tense and, you know, trying to close the sale. So to, to the extent we're making it easier, it's an improvement for the consumer and I think the agents actually, because it's, it's taking it out of their domain. So, you know, I think that's, that's a good thing, you know, and I agree, we, we don't want to add to the burden. It's already a pretty anxious time for most of these people going through a real estate sale, so.
So Mayor, can I riff off of what Larry's saying and ask Garrett, even though we have another speaker, to explain exactly if the requirement to replace non-compliant toilets shall not delay the transfer? Could you explain the process of what happens after the transfer? How do we know that it occurs?
So what happens typically in a resale inspection, we check all the boxes. When the boxes aren't unchecked, then the buyer and seller futz with getting all the boxes checked. And if we get asked, we go out and do resale, resale, reinspection. If not, then we are done. Under this scenario, how it would work is they would, we'd do the inspection, we didn't check the box, they'd have to fill out a form and then they need to send it to us 60 days after to indicate that they purchased the toilet or changed it out. And if they didn't, then we'd have to come up with a mechanism of following up to send them a letter to ask if they've done the change out.
We already use that form. It's called the self-certification water conserving form. You gave me a copy of it.
Right. And we do that oddly. We do that with every building permit. If you get a building permit, you fill out the form because under building code, any permit, regardless of a plumbing permit, you're required to certify or demonstrate that, in our interpretation, that you're meeting current water standards, conservation standards.
Every building permit, whether or not it involves plumbing situations, it requires a replacement of the toilet.
It requires that the, yes, that the home would meet current water conservation standards. That's actually in the building code. That's different from what we have in ours. How we address it is similar to other communities. We give a form to the homeowner and contractor and ask them to fill it out and self-certify.
They just self-certified that it is, even though...
We don't go in and re-inspect unless the plumbing permit requires them to do something that requires us to re-inspect, like if they're remodeling the bathroom.
Where does the self-certification form end up?
In our files.
It would go, it would go in the property file. Yeah.
Person comes along, a couple of years later, buys my house and I've checked off the box. I've fibbed and I checked off the box. Now they turn to me and they go, "And what else didn't you do, Mr. Weitzoff?"
Guess I don't have, that was a rhetorical question, I think?
Well, I mean, you know, we, this, we talked about it the last time I was here. I mean, it's, it's part of your municipal authority to inspect your housing stock and know what's out there and try to bring it up to code. And, and this is such a simple fix, I'm, I'm really amazed at, at the level of acrimony that it's caused. But this one has a big impact. And, I mean, I don't want to go through the whole explanation of why, you know, we have very limited resources here. We have 79,000 acre feet in our seven reservoirs. That's it. So that's about two, two and a half years worth of water supply for Marin County. Then we start importing. And, you know, people take it for granted. Well, the people up in Sonoma County and the Russian River, they don't take it for granted. And I'm not saying it's like because they don't like Marin County. I'm saying it has an impact on the Russian River. It has an impact on their usage. I mean, we're all in it together and I'm just saying Marin needs to step up. You know, this is, this is part of that process that all of our communities are dealing with and all of our water districts are dealing with across the state of California. It's the same everywhere.
Since we have you here, can I ask you one other question on this? Because I agree with you on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Landscape watering. I don't understand why we allow it.
That's, we, we are, technically, people are only supposed to be watering their landscape on a schedule, on a permitted schedule. I can tell you about four months ago, as far as landscape irrigation is concerned, we, the district, passed an ordinance that requires the installation of gray water so that we're reusing water that would be wastewater, that would just go into the pipes, into the landscape. So that is another huge waste of water that we are trying to, to deal with. That's going to be another, you know, that's going to take a while. But our projected use of water in Marin County is actually flatlined with a relatively modest population growth. So we're not projecting a huge increase in water use. And the reason is, is the efficiency that we're building into the system and our customers' consciousness about water, it's having an impact. And this is creating problems for water districts all across the state because it's having a financial impact on the water district, which used to base their budget on volumetric sales of water. No more. We went through a whole rate restructuring. Folks are going to start getting restructured bills, restructured bills.
This is probably the biggest bang for the buck in terms of saving water too, because, you know, the price of the toilet, 150 bucks it's in there, it starts saving, you know, 20% on flushing of the biggest use of water in the house. So it's, you know, when you talk about, you know, ensuring that we can flatline the water demand, even though the population may grow, et cetera, this is probably one of the strongest tools to, you know, increase that efficiency as we're going forward in the future.
Yeah, it's, it's going to have an impact right away. And there's, there's other technology that's out there that's going to come in. But, I mean, this one is cheap, inexpensive and quick.
In terms of the other technology coming in, is that around, I mean, you hear inside of the house versus outside, but I, from what I understand, landscaping is a big...
It is.
...user. And, you know, and so we're talking about the 20% on this one appliance, which is not insignificant, but, you know, landscaping is a huge user. I mean, maybe that has to come a lot. I mean, I know that in my own experience and the people that I know, last summer, you know, there, we were basically just trying to keep things from, you know, trees and stuff from dying and everything else was kind of falling by the wayside. You know, that said that, that, you know, there's a certain neighbor who's moved from the Pacific West, Northwest and you could, they have a very green lawn, let's put it that way. And, you know, it was seen running on the street a number of times. You know, I mean, I, I also don't want to be wasteful on, you know, just changing out plumbing things and, you know, filling up landfills with more toilets, especially if there's a, you know, AD...
I talked to Joe Garberino about that, okay, because they...
Well, okay.
They can't...
Well, they weigh a lot. He should be happy because they weigh a lot.
They can be, they can be used as a roadbed.
Yeah.
And California doesn't allow porcelain into the roadbed, but what they do here in Marin is they do grind up the porcelain, and they actually use it at the landfill, because there's many miles of road in that landfill up in Nevada that they're using, they're using crushed porcelain fixtures.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm glad there's some use for it, but, you know, that takes a lot of energy to grind them up, I'm sure, and, you know, I mean, it, it is, it is a use of energy and, and...
Yeah.
...stuff like that to do that. I mean, I, it's, yeah, it's, it's nice to change it out. I mean, that, I think having an expiration date, if you will, or whatever, you know, have basically a, a 10-year time was, was listed as a, a way to deal with that.
Can I just say one thing? Is the current plumbing code that we've adopted, the CalGreen code, says this, "On or before January 1st, 2017, noncompliant plumbing fixtures in any single-family residential real property shall be replaced by the property owner with water-conserving plumbing fixtures." So, the bottom line is, next year, everybody, not pulling a plumbing permit, not a transfer of property, is supposed to be changing out. So I...
So, wait, the 1.6s are noncompliant now?
Yes.
Well, it, it, but it doesn't say that. It says water-conserving.
In other parts of the code, it specifically speaks to what Larry's talking about, which is the 1.28. What I'm saying is, they're noncompliant now, and January 1st, everybody's supposed to change them out. Now, I don't think anybody's gonna go to everybody's house and say, "Are you doing it?" But the bottom line is, we're talking about something that's already happening. The CalGreen standards are getting updated now, and they're gonna be even more conservative, and water conservation is one of the governor's five pillars. It's gonna be pretty rigorous, so I think, I guess, I just wanna say that we shouldn't really be talking about a 10-year timeframe, because we're already there.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I, and I think it's...
I'm talking about 10 years, retroactively.
And I think it's kinda opening up a can of worms, truthfully. You know, I think this is gonna be a very effective ordinance, and it's a pretty simple step, and you're, you're just getting in compliance with the code.
Okay. Let's hear what Frank has to say before we come back and...
Can I, can I say one other point that I meant to say, because you had referred, and a number of references have been to this huge letter writing, you know, we've gotten 90 emails, but there's an online form where you click a button and it sends the email, and I've gotten two emails that were not from that.
Yeah.
Hit the button, and it automatically sends you this pre-written thing, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, and just one other brief thing on landscaping. You can get a landscape inspection done free from the water district. So if anybody's concerned about their landscape use, call them, they'll come out, they do a very thorough evaluation of your landscape. So that's just another service that's out there. So MMWD is doing a, a pretty good job as far as engaging. Of course, it can be better. That's, you know, why this kind of engagement is, is so important. So thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks.
Okay, Frank?
Sure, thank you. Mayor, Council, Members Frank Egger, 13-minute away Fairfax, and a member of the Ross Valley Sanitary District Board of Directors. Fairfax has been so far ahead of the curve on so many issues for so many years, that I'm just kinda surprised that, that a big deal's been made out of this. This ordinance went into effect in Fairfax over 20 years ago. I mean, Fairfax was, you know, it's pesticides, toilet, you name it, Fairfax has been out there on the issues, living wages, et cetera. So no one should be surprised if Fairfax is doing something out of the ordinary and stepping out and, and has a vision. I mean, that's, that's, that's why we're all, that's why we've all been there, and you're there now. A little over, half the toilets have been changed out in Fairfax, which means a lot of them haven't been changed. So, so, you know, eventually, we're gonna catch up with them all. And, and for those who have a dual-flush toilet, they're 1.0 or 0.9, or 0.8, and 1.6, they're gonna average out, they average out to the 1.28, so you're okay. You don't have to change out your dual-flush toilet. I've been trying to get the Ross Valley Sanitary District to, to fund waterless urinals. One waterless urinal saves 40,000 gallons of water a year. And, of course, fund the gray water system, and our board keeps dragging its feet and dragging its feet, and the staff is, oh my gosh, this is an awful lot of work, et cetera. But water's where it's at. You know, Larry's at the top end of the water supply, I'm at the bottom end of the water supply. And when you look at Orange County, we think of Orange County as a very conservative county. They're so far ahead of everyone else in California, they're, they're, they're recycling 90% of their wastewater with in, in aquifer injections, and they're letting it sit there for about two years, and they're taking it out, down, row to the other end, and recycling and reusing it. Now, when I go to Orange County, I kinda cringe when I drink the water, but it's working down there. It's actually working down there. So the sewer, your sewer district, we're under a cease and disorder, cease and desist order from the Bay Area Regional Water Quality Control Board because of the problems we've had with spills. So it's, it's a dual purpose, and lowering our water usage here, it's also reducing the amount of wastewater that's, that we're pumping and treating over at the Central Marine Sanitation Agency. We, we, we collect it, we pump it over there, and we treat it, and we pay to treat it. So if we could reduce this water supply, the wastewater supply, we're all save, gonna save money in the end. I, 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 I think, you know, Fairfax should just do what it's doing. The, the Realtors came, came down at our meetings, and they were really upset because, because of the cease and desist order, we're requiring pressure testing on laterals and a replacement of all of these laterals at the time of sale. So, so we're talking, here at Fairfax, $150 toilet, but the sanitary district is talking a $4,000 lateral that has to be replaced at time of sale in a number of these properties. They run a pressure test of it, doesn't mean the pressure test, unfortunately, they gotta replace the lateral. We're giving a $2,000 rebate towards a, towards a lateral to help folks out a bit. But, I mean, that's, that's just where, where water and sewer issues are going in, in, in the 21st century. And so I just, you know, commend you for, for everything you do, getting out there ahead of the curve, and I thank you, and just, and please, you know, continue this ordinance. Don't, don't, don't worry about, you know, we're not complaining about you guys.
Thank you. Mallory, did you wanna speak?
Basically, we have pretty much one Realtor here, and they're really rich people. And the houses are going, I mean, fixer-uppers are going for $600,000. And I don't see where $200, $250 to replace a toilet is a deal breaker for any, and people are overbidding for pretty much every house. So I, I think whatever the, the Board of Realtors has to say here, I think is really irrelevant and kinda greedy. So I just, I would just go ahead with the ordinance and go for the 1.28. Thanks.
Okay, so let's bring it back. I, I, before we make a motion, there is something...
I actually wanna make a suggested change.
Thank you.
So I'm not in agreement with the idea of, you know, having a timestamp or something of that nature. But what I, you know, I think at the last meeting, we talked about, you know, the change to the language that dealt with having language that specifically said it wouldn't get involved, you know, it wouldn't get in the way of a sale or transfer. And we also talked about the change-out happening no later than 60 days after the sale or transfer of the property. And, okay, so number one, we're changing what was point of sale to making it 60 days after by this language. So it's, it's not having to happen within that short escrow period. And I would suggest, originally, I think I'd suggested 90 days, but I think we should just say 120 days to give even more time. We still have the self-certification, and that's, that would be the only change I would make. I also wanna just make one comment. The 80 to 90 emails, I responded to every single one of those, and explained to them that the point of sale was in there since 2001. What we were doing was changing the flush rate, that we had made this change to the language because we did hear concerns, and I shared the language with them. I'm not sure that the executive director of MAR shared the specific language. And there were, like John said, there were maybe two or three that were a little bit different from the boilerplate one, but I, I heard back from a few of those folks. Some of them said, "I don't care." One said, "Thank you very much, and why don't you tell me how the self-certification form would work, and I'll present it to the Realtors?" So, and another person said, "Thank you for writing back, appreciate that you spent that time." And so, it's all about water conservation. Just remember this statistic. It's accounting for nearly 30% of the average home's indoor water consumption. It's huge. We can save 20% by this change-out, and I think Frank's clarification on the dual-flush is pretty important. So it's not gonna mess up a sale. Homes are selling for a lot. This is not a $4,000 sewer lateral, but I still support that. But it's, it's, you know, maybe a high-end toilet with an install is $500. So that would be the change I would make, saying 120 days rather than the 60 days.
Go ahead, Peter.
I, I, this is a, a very important upgrade for water conservation. And, you know, point of sale is one of the important times when improvements are made. Not everyone does a remodel, not every house that gets sold does a remodel. And with all the other things that need to be done during a sale, you know, I, I was going to support this without these other modifications, because in the scheme of things, it's fairly minor, it doesn't, it, it's not gonna prevent a sale from going forward. But we listened to MAR. MAR wanted this language, we made it easier. And, you know, they still sent out this email blast to all of us, saying, "Oh, it's, it's a terrible ordinance, but we put in the language that they actually suggested." So I agree, I, I think it's, it is a bit of a tempest in a teapot. I would tend to just keep it the 60 days myself. I don't think the additional 60 days would really make much difference in terms of when Anyways, I, I support the ordinance as it's currently written, and I think we've gone quite a ways to accommodate the Realtors on this, and especially since this, since this requirement would not affect the sale or transfer of a property. So I think all their, those concerns are met.
Well, I think you're right. I, I think, however, if you don't make it as a condition of, of the sale at the time of sale, and, and the parties don't include money or set it aside in escrow, I got a bad feeling. You know, you're 60 or 120 days out, I think people are gonna shine this on. And without the town having the resources to actually get out there, knocking everybody's door and make a personal visit, I, I think that the time will come that you sell your house, you look in the file. At that point, you might have a, an unpleasant moment of conversation with a prospective buyer, but I guess if we really wanted to put the screws down on this, we would make it a condition at, at the time of sale. I, I'm, I would like to think that it's, but I got a bad feeling that it's gonna have the kind of impact that the water district and we all are looking for. But that being said, I was a little surprised by the, more than a little surprised, by the number of emails that were clogging the inbox from MMR and this, because we did have a conversation with them, and as Peter said, we conversed and agreed on this language. I really don't think there's a difference between the 60 and the 120. I couldn't care less what anybody wants to agree with.
I don't think they agreed to the language. I think we heard what they said, and we suggested changes, trying to accommodate what they said.
Well, that's close.
So, we, we tried to accommodate not having point of sale.
Right.
We tried to make sure that we added the additional buffer, but, you know, there wasn't a conversation where they said, "We like it."
Fair enough. Fair enough. We had a conversation, they suggested some things, we agreed to them. We're not going the entire, we're not going for the whole marriage. At this point, I would go with the, with the language as proposed, or if it's the council's wishes, to double it out to 120.
I, I wanted to just throw in this thing that I brought up about the rebate, just because one of the things they state in this letter, which is that they're ready and they're willing and able to be our partner in educating the new homeowners, Fairfax about the grant program. So I'm assuming that grant program means that if we can do something to offset being, them being hit with having to spend more money.
So a friend of mine just sold a house, falling down, not great house...
No, no, I understand how much they cost.
For $1.27 million.
So wait, I understand, Barbara. It's not about, it's not about that. It's about what they're expressing is that we're not being friendly, we're not saying, "Hey, come on in, we'll teach you how to be more, you know, conservation-minded, we'll make it easier for you," regardless if they're, if they're very, very wealthy and paying for big...
I don't think there's necessarily really wealthy people. I think people are buying very expensive houses, and I don't see that us throwing in $100 from a budget that's really small...
No, no, I don't think, I, I, let me finish real quick.
Okay.
So I'm just wondering, if that grant, if the rebate program exists, and as we mentioned, you said, "Well, yeah, I mean, so if it, we'll change the time on it, so it doesn't have to be that it was put in more than 15 years ago." What if it was a five-year-old? I, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to, to, to make this without, I don't think that we should be compromising on what we have the opportunity to do here, which is a major conservation effort. But I do want to address the concerns that they're expressing in great numbers, regardless of what it took to express it, by saying, "There is a way to help make this happen." Our, our water district and our, you know, we're working together...
Sometimes you have to just tell your friends they're wrong. And in this case, I mean, many of us have been supported by MAR, certainly I have, in election after election after election, didn't take their money, but I was very pleased and honored to have their support. In politics, it occasionally occurs that we stand up and we say to our friends, "You know, love ya, but not today." And I think on this issue of water conservation, the issue of our day, this is a nice compromise. I think it's, I think it's expansive, actually, but I'll, I'll, I'll support this.
But, but, so I'm not sure what I'm hearing. So Department of Water Resources has a rebate that doesn't have a timeframe on it for the, now, they may run out of money, but they do, and it's only for one, up to one, and it's $100, up to $100. I'm not really sure what that means. And so, and I suspect that with the new pressures by the governor on water conservation, they will infuse more money into that program. It would be nice if MMWD would not have that restriction of having to be so old before it's changed out. I think that would be helpful, but I know, Larry, you're just one member.
I, I just think it would be a really nice thing to address one of the things that their, that their representative, their CEO, expressed, which is that they'd like to help us to spread the word, the conservation word, and about any kind of grant or financial assistance available. I, I would support doing this and moving forward as it is, even with the 60 days, if we could add that kind of language to, to, to address their concerns.
Well, I think that's entirely right. I mean, I, I mean, I think we should take the opportunity to educate people on how important it is, and how much water-saving there is, and how they can get reimbursed for the money. And, you know, the person selling this falling-down house for $1.2 million or what, I mean, they're not hurting, you know, and if, the Realtor wants to have, I mean, personally, I think a lot of these letters that we've gotten from Realtors is a knee-jerk response, and like, "Oh, we got to stop it here in Fairfax before, you know, other people get this great idea that this is the one time when you can really have this work." You know, I have reservations about how it's wasteful to change things out, but, you know, it's wasteful to waste water all the time, and 10% of the energy use in this county is spent pumping water around, so, you know, it's, I, I don't even, I think, yeah, the 60 days is something that we offered to MAR, which, for the listeners who don't know what MAR is, is the Marin Association of Realtors, which is where every single one of these letters has come from.
So are we ready to make a-
You know, I don't know that the 60 days, I mean, it makes it less effective. I agree with you, David.
I'm, I'm fine with withdrawing my suggested change.
So who would like to craft something?
But let's, let's put the educational component in there, too.
I don't think an ordinance has a place for an educational component. I would think we would, might have a link-
Well, we have materials, I mean-
Yeah, how about this? Suggestion is, I've talked to the MMWD staff, they've indicated they're more than helping to do outreach for their type of programs. I think it's just as easy if that staff person just talks to MAR about how they could do outreach and get the materials to the Realtors.
Yeah, that's-
And the rebate? That was the part that I was-
That was it. He would reach out. What happens is, he would reach out and let them know about the rebates available to the buyers and stuff.
Okay, so there's no place in this-
No, no, not in an ordinance.
For something-
No, I, I think, off your direction, and it's easy enough, I can ask the Water District person who I spoke to to go ahead and contact Andy, and then have that discussion.
And maybe he can let him know about the Department of Water Resources as well. I'll make a motion, since I think I started this as mayor. I would like to make a motion to introduce and waive first-reading and read-by-title-only ordinance number 796, and ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax, amending Town Chapter 17.132, Water Conservation: Reducing the Effective Flush Volumes for Newly Installed Toilets and for toilets on properties involved in sales or transfers from 1.6 to 1.28 gallons.
I'll second.
Okay, so that's motion Kohler, and second Lex. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And there's none opposed. So, okay, thank you. And for our-
And thank you, Larry and Frank, for your insight-
Yes, thank you very much, everyone.
On both ends of the water cycle.
Thank you. Thanks to Mallory for your comments as well.
So we'll take this up, folks? At 11:20? Okay, so we will go ahead and take up item 13, which is a discussion and consideration of financing town infrastructure through refinancing of bonds. Garrett?
Okay.
And Michael? Whichever?
Okay, so briefly, Michael can answer more specific questions, but basically, you may recall back in October of last year, the council expressed interest in obtaining financing for infrastructure. Typically, the town takes a pay-as-you-go approach. If grant funding and budgeting is available, then we'll fund the project. At the October meeting, staff reported on a couple of low programs out there, and we also indicated we'd research the feasibility of refinancing our outstanding bonds. So the town has some series of bonds out, 2000, 2006 bonds, general obligation bonds out there. In the past, the town has refinanced some bonds to provide additional funding for street improvements without costing the ratepayers anymore. And so we've had preliminary discussions with our municipal bond advisor, and he indicated that there's lots of variables, but perhaps if we were to refinance the 2006 series bonds, we can maybe pull out about $80,000 to $100,000 available for infrastructure. Kind of depends, there are high issuance costs, but you probably would be able to net after that about $80,000 to $100,000. And so, given that, that the possibility of refinancing the bonds to get out $80,000 to $100,000, and also, given earlier this evening, we reported there's about $360,000 conservatively that we think will have an available additional fund balance, and that we have received a contribution from PG&E of $52,000 to go toward the Mountain View-Tamal Pius repaving, that we really think at this point, it would be beneficial for the town to pursue the refinancing and not pursue other loan-type financing, because we think we have enough funds available to cover the type of infrastructure projects we're thinking about.
Would the bonds still be paid off at the same time, or would we like starting over, and then they're going to go out for X years?
This would be keeping it within the parameters of the existing bonds, as far as time period.
Okay. And at the October meeting, we also indicated some projects considers Canyon Road, fixing the retaining wall, preparing that road, and reconstruction of Tamal Pius and Mountain View roads. So what we're proposing, actually, this evening, the preferred approach is that we would build a financing plan within the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 16 and 17. The reality is, if we get direction to refinance bonds, the earliest we can do is get the proceeds in August. We also need to reconvene the Measure K Committee, because they need to make a recommendation on the type of improvements. But we think if we take this approach, that with the combination of funds, as well as Measure A funding, we actually could put together a financing plan that enables us to do maybe $350,000, $400,000 of improvements. But what we need, in terms of our recommendation, is, we need direction from the council to pursue bond financing, or refinancing at this time. There are a whole series of steps, and the sooner we start, the sooner we can be able to maybe line it up, so we get that funding available in August. So with that, that's the staff report, and Michael can provide more details if you like.
How could anybody argue against this? You're going to refinance existing debt into new debt that will pay, be paid off in the existing timeframe. It's not like you're buying a road, and then it's going to, so you're, you're going to get more money, you're going to pay it off in the same time period.
Yeah, now, it should be pointed out, though, your one option is you could choose to do nothing, I don't know why you would, or you could choose just to refinance and not pull the money out.
Why would we do that?
Well, if you did, the reality is, for a typical ratepayer, they would save a couple bucks a year, but that, that is an option. We're not recommending that, because we think the infrastructure is a much higher priority and would benefit the community.
Easiest vote of the night.
One of the things I wanted to add to this is, one of the reasons why you were able to pull money out of this, is our existing bonds are, are ranging between 4.5% to 6%. And they're, the current rates would bring it down to about 2.75%. So there's a considerable rate difference there. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that it's likely, if we pulled this kind of money out, you'd get more mileage on this money in this time period, because with gas prices being so low, asphalt prices are really low, so you can get a lot more road for your buck.
The, the PG&E grant, that's going to reduce the capital expenditures, so therefore, that's where that additional savings is? The PG&E grant is for roads-
Right. Actually, what it is, is PG&E did all that pipeline replacement of their lines, and what we did was, we negotiated with them and said, "You're really messing up our roads. It's not acceptable for you to just backfill the portion that you've, you trenched, so really, you need to pay a portion of the overall repaving of the roads."
I see.
And they have a formula they use, and that's how we came up with $52,000.
And then, is there any risk in, in going forward? I mean, it's just-
No, there's no risk. Actually, there's a series of steps you're going to have to approve anyway, so at any time, you can tell us to stop.
Right, and basically, we're just taking advantage of the lower rates. When did the rates drop that much?
These bonds were issued 10 years ago, the current ones, so-
Right.
It has been over the last, primarily over the last five years, that, that rates have been really down, mostly because they've been held artificially low by the, by the feds.
Quantitative easing.
The quantitative easing, yeah.
Well, after public comment, I can't wait to make the motion to direct staff on this. Mike, can you stay up all night?
Cindy? Any comment? No? Okay, so we're ready to bring it back.
Great, let me make a motion to please direct staff at the very earliest convenience to pursue the financing as directed in this memorandum.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, winds off, motion winds off, and second read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you for finding that money under the seat cushions of the cap, which, so to speak, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, and I guess it's our budget discussion of going forward.
As to what we do with it?
What we do with this other stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, thank you, everyone. Meeting, meeting adjourned.